Excellent.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this evening we are gathered to have the fourth meeting to consider the 2019 budget and the 2019 to 2023 capital improvements program and to review requests by the Manhattan Area Chamber of Commerce for economic development, military relations, and convention and visitors' bureau services along with updates.
Mayor, thank you and just we drew straws over the internet and I won, so Lyle gets to go first. He's gonna kick off the chamber CVB presentation. Welcome.
Thank you, Ron. We're gonna have to check those straws to see if they were fixed or not. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Lyle Butler, President and CEO of the Manhattan Area Chamber of Commerce. This is my 18th budget year and it'll be my final budget year. As I think most of you know, I'm retiring in February, so someone else will be standing here next year. But I want to say before we start our presentation to all of you, to the city staff that's here, and citizens at home, that for the last 18 years, we have tried to bring you through the volunteers, our Board of Directors, our advisory boards with economic development, with CVB, with military, try to bring you a professional staff, try to bring you a group of volunteers that want to partner and have partnered successfully with the city. Our interests in Manhattan are the same as your interests. We want a better place to live, work, and play. Our efforts to do that are in partnership with you and we look forward to continuing that partnership through the rest of 18 and as we start in 2019. So tonight, we've divided it up similar to what we have. Commissioner McKee, this will be your first time, but we're gonna have the Convention and Visitors Bureau present first, and that is led by Karen Hibbert, who is our Vice President with the Chamber and has been with the Chamber for 23 years, and she's gonna introduce some members of her advisory board that are here tonight to present to you. When they have concluded, we're gonna end there, Mayor, and allow questions, comments, suggestions, ideas for you to present. When that's completed, we're gonna start the economic development and military presentation and we'll do our updates. And again, at the conclusion of that, we will stop and allow for discussion, questions, ideas, your thinking, and partnerships. Something new that we have, which was an initiative that the Chamber started, which was the Greater Manhattan Project, which became a community project, and we have, in this case, not a staff person, but our Chair of the Board is going to give you simply an update tonight on what used to be called the Greater Manhattan Project. Now it's called Region Reimagined, and that is going to be done by Matt Crocker, who is our Chair of the Board. And then at the conclusion of that, any questions related to that particular project? That is not a funding request at this point. That is an update because it's just an important part of the overall Chamber initiative that we're commencing. So if that's okay with you, Mayor, we will begin and start getting underway, keep you on schedule tonight. So first, I'd like to bring up Karen Hibbert.
Whatever you call her.
I call her Karen. Or she's called the CVB Director, Vice President of Chamber. She has a number of titles, but she's been here the longest, so she can give you more history than any of the rest of us here.
Thank you. Thank you, Lyle, and welcome, Karen.
Thank you. Thank you. It is our joy to come before you, City Commissioners, Mayor, city staff, and members of the audience to share with you our second quarter presentation as well as to discuss our budget. Budget time is a challenging time, particularly for our growing community, and we take it very seriously that as the Convention and Visitors Bureau, our job is to attract visitors to come to enjoy this community, to help drive those transient guest tax dollars, to increase those and to also increase those sales tax dollars that help make our community go round and round. We are honored to have a very active advisory committee, and with that, we have two co-chairs that help guide our advisory committee. This year, our advisory committee is led by two active businessmen, Neil Farmer and Ben Siegel, and we've asked, we feel it's very important that you hear from them of our activities. Neil Farmer is with Community First National Bank, and he's keenly aware of the investment that is made in the hospitality industry here in Manhattan. Neil has served as a City Commissioner and Mayor in another community. He understands the pressures that you all feel as you're handling budgeting. With his work with hotels, dining establishments, establishments and attractions, we truly feel that Neil has a true pulse on the business in Manhattan. Ben Siegel is the owner of a very active retail business in Manhattan, The Manhattan Running Company. Ben and his team are responsible for bringing to life many running events, some of which possibly you have participated in, which those running events help generate visitors to our community, which again, generate that transient guest tax when they stay with us and sales taxes for the community. I'd like to also introduce to you the team that makes things happen with the Convention and Visitors Bureau. It takes many of us to make this work and to make it work successfully. You will see with us, Tony Ballard is our Convention Sales Manager, Marcia Rozell is our Sports and Leisure Tourism Sales Manager, Deana Huff is our Director of Communications, Michael Goins is also our Website Manager. As they help tell the story of Manhattan and our many activities, we can't do it without this team of selling and driving that information, whether it is virtual or in print. So without further ado, I'm going to bring Neil up to begin our presentation.
Mayor Commission, good evening. Thank you for your time. The mission of the Manhattan Convention and Visitors Bureau is to attract visitors to Manhattan to spend their money and have fun. Why is this important? Because they stay in our hotels, spending money. They eat in our dining establishments, they shop in our stores, empty their pocketbooks into the city coffers through sales tax. CVB is an important economic driver as our promotional efforts help create the transient guest tax and sales tax collections. You'll see the next slide includes a Smith Travel year-to-date chart. The latest Smith Travel goes through May of 18. As you can see, the first call on the occupancy rate year-to-date is 62.3%. Anybody who's familiar with hotel occupancy, that's pretty darn good. That's up by 5.2% from the previous year. The average rate, the average daily rate is 97.57. That's the average rate that you and I pay when we go to one of those properties, and that's up $3.46 from the previous year. Revenue per room, which is what the hoteliers make per room, is up by $7 compared to 2017. I'd like to call attention to the fact that room supply is down a little bit. The Regent CN and the Motel 6 did close. However, demand for rooms is up slightly and revenues generated through May 2018 were $11,349,858, which is up $585,220 from 2017. The next slide shows a monthly occupancy for our community through June, no, through May, I'm sorry, through May. The light blue line on the right is, yeah, right there, that's our numbers year-to-date, shows by month to month. This is reflective of conferences, special events, and business growth in the region, and traditionally, our softer months are January and February, but you see, we have nice bumps, especially in February, for those two months. As we wait for our June report, we once again believe that we'll see a slight increase over last year in hotel occupancy. Just to repeat, that our hotel occupancy through May 2018 is 62.3%. Second quarter conferences. Conferences are people and money that we bring to town. Visit Manhattan worked directly with 72 meetings, welcomed 8,292 attendees, yielding 3,827 room nights sold, which generated an estimated 6,768, 7,000, 6,700, I'm sorry, million. Boy, I blew that one. Estimated 6,768,712. That's an estimated economic impact. That's numbers based on our estimate that each individual comes to town, spends $311 per day. Unique meetings in Manhattan, and we do have them. Two weeks ago, Manhattan hosted the American Society of Mammoologists Conference. This meeting welcomed 400 attendees to Manhattan, Kansas, from 42 states and 13 countries. The opening reception was held at the Flint Hills Discovery Center, and this group photo was taken inside the K-State Student Union. This conference was planned by K-State Global Campus and serviced by the CVB. This meeting was held at the K-State Student Union, utilizing several of our hotel properties and other off-site venues of the Flint Hills Discovery Center, Konza Prairie, 1115 event venue, and K-State Alumni Center. The Mammoologists also hosted a mammal crawl on Tuesday, June 26, Aggieville. That was very well attended. I'm not sure what that was, but it sounds like fun.
It's like a bar crawl.
Yeah.
Instead of a bar crawl, it was a mammal crawl.
A mammal crawl. I got you. All right. Manhattan is pleased to host many unique meetings. In March, we will host the Kansas Association of DECA. Organizers have chosen Manhattan for the first time. This organization is 70 years old with memberships consisting of high school students. DECA's focus is finance, hospitality, and management. With nearly 1,000 attendees, this meeting will consist of competition in which judges from the Manhattan community are required. We are in need of 125 judges for Monday, March 4, and 60 judges for Tuesday, March 5. So if you're willing to help, we'd appreciate a call. Give Tony Ballard, Convention Sales Manager, a call and he'll get you set up. This meeting is ideal to expose students to Kansas State University and help convince them that the Manhattan community and the university is a place to be when they get ready for college.
What is the name of it again? You called it DECA or?
I'm sorry?
It's the Kansas Association of DECA, and DECA is that, it's not just an acronym that we use, that's really what their name is. It's an educational conference. Kind of what I would, it would be comparable to Future Business Leaders of America.
No, I just wasn't sure I was catching.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
We also celebrated National Tourism Week. Travel Then and Now was the theme of the National Travel and Tourism Week, held May 6 to the 12th in 2018. Manhattan celebrated this week with recognizing the Manhattan tourism industry, hosting a celebration at 1115 event venue in Aggieville. It was appropriate for us to thank the industry that welcomes our visitors and provides them with memorable experiences, and thank you, Mayor Morris, for helping us do that. We honored a dedicated tourism partner at the tourism celebration, as well as paid homies to our beloved quirky travel attraction, Mr. Johnny Caw. Johnny Caw has upgraded his wardrobe this year with the talented skills of John Stroh with JS Sign &amp; Onning. Our quiet collaborator was awarded Outstanding Tourism Partner during our National Tourism Week Celebration. John's love for Manhattan and tourism is evident, and John and his teams, with John and his team, spending over 400 hours designing and perfecting a shiny new apple for the Little Apple Ball Drop on this past New Year's Eve celebration. John also created Johnny's Illuminated Santa Hat and, most recently, his birthday hat. So stay tuned, there'll be one more hat coming. Johnny Caw's Happy Birthday to Johnny Caw is another event, and Johnny's actual birthday came to life with a partnership with several community partners, including the City of Manhattan, Parks and Rec, Riley County Historical Museum, Manhattan Broadcasting, Hy-Vee, JS Signs, the Manhattan Meat Market, and the Friends of Johnny Caw Committee. Johnny Caw's party celebrated Manhattan tourism complete with birthday cake, hot dogs at One Mile Fun Run, and of course, Johnny Caw's bobbleheads. More than 300 people joined in on the fun on Thursday, May 10. For more than 50 years, Johnny has stood tall in city parks, serving as a backdrop for countless pictures, family picnics, and more recently, Facebook and Snapchat photos. Local Friends of Johnny continue to keep the quirky treasure of Johnny Caw alive for more years to come, all in the name of tourism. The Manhattan CVB donated the Friends of Johnny Caw efforts by creating Johnny Caw bobbleheads, with 100% of the proceeds going directly to revitalization of the project. Construction and beautification of Johnny is slated for mid-August with completion in November, and so mark your calendars for next year, as Johnny will be in great shape for one more party celebrating tourism and him. Social media and Johnny. We've kind of directed to get more involved with social media, so we've done that. Much of the success of Johnny Caw's birthday party and community celebration was due to social media efforts. We partnered with restaurants around town to offer Johnny Caw specials during National Travel and Tourism Week and shared their promotions on our social media outlet. We recreated promotional videos with Johnny Caw to bring attention to the efforts of the Friends of Johnny Caw and to our National Tourism, or our National Travel and Tourism Week Celebration. Combined promotions for Johnny Caw's birthday reached over 20,000 people on Facebook alone. We hope you didn't miss out on the food specials, which included a Johnny Caw burger at the Little Apple Brewing Company, Johnny Caw French faux dip at the Tall Grass Tap House, a larger-than-life Johnny Caw doughnut at Varsity Donuts, a Johnny Caw rib platter from Wahoo, a sunflower martini from Paracac Grill, and Johnny Caw sliders at Bourbon and Baker. All of these specials brought awareness to Johnny Caw and helped promote the sale of Johnny Caw bobbleheads as their donations to the future Johnny Caw Plaza renovations. Thank you. I'll let Ben Siegel take over.
Thank you, Neil.
Thanks for having us. During the second quarter, Manhattan has hosted 24 sporting events. These events include soccer, gymnastics, disc golf, baseball, softball, running events, bike tours, and golf. These sporting events welcomed over 6,500 participants. We had 2,500 room nights associated with it, generating an estimated economic impact of $2.8 million. As we look forward, the vote of confidence the community has given with the half-cent sales tax will bring online additional new gyms and improve our sporting facilities we already market. Marcia Rozell, our Sports and Leisure Sales Manager, is very active with the NASC, the National Association of Sports Commissions, and is constantly promoting our venues to sports planners. We have a solid working relationship with the Manhattan Parks and Rec, just as meeting planners plan several years in advance, so these sports planners do the same. Our marketing continues to be face-to-face, as well as using a mix of traditional marketing, social media, fam tours, and sports conferences to keep Manhattan prominent in sports planners' minds. Interest in Manhattan is great. In September, Manhattan will be hosting the first, or excuse me, the inaugural gravel duro bike race. We anticipate this race to bring in over 300 participants for the first year. The CVB keeps track of sporting events that have an interest in MHK. Most recently, these events requested interest in us, and we could not accommodate them. The USA Badminton Association needed 10 courts, and we currently only have six, and USA Swimming, we don't have any pools large enough indoor or out to help accommodate that, but they are showing interest, which is a good thing. Next up, the Fourth Annual Bill Snyder Highway Half Marathon and 5K has become a tradition. This year, the event hosted just under 1,500 participants in both the 5K and half marathon. And some exciting news that I haven't revealed to anybody else is that we have received permission next year to finish on the field, which we're hoping really ups the number of participants for that event. So you guys are the first to find out about that. 24% indicated they spent nights in our hotels. Manhattan hotel occupancy, excuse me, was 76.2% on Friday night and 84% on Saturday night, which means obviously people are staying over after the event, which is a good thing. The Bill Snyder Highway Half wasn't the only special event happening that weekend. This year, it fell on the same weekend as the Flint Hills Festival, which attracted about 2,700 attendees. Many of these attendees were runners who dashed down to the Blue Earth Plaza to be a part of the Flint Hills Festival. We also hosted the 3A championships for both baseball and softball at K-State's baseball stadium. For many years, Manhattan has been doing this. This year, there were 16 teams in town. This year, the stadium was filled with Riley County fans, which obviously is just down the road. This was their first experience at the state playoffs for baseball, and all those fans certainly didn't spend the night. They spent money as they cheered on their team. Of the 16 teams chasing the championship trophy, eight teams stayed overnight in Manhattan. Sabetha won the boys' baseball championship, and Silver Lake took home the women's softball championship. The estimated economic impact of hosting a state championship tournament was just over And we, again, hosted the kicker country stampede just a couple weeks ago. It was a huge success again. The great headliners like Cole Swindell, Alabama, and Florida Georgia Line brought some great crowds to the Manhattan and Total Creek area. We utilized the power of social media to promote two things near and dear to Manhattan, country stampede and Johnny Caw. And we'll show you this video here real quick. Karen assures me that was not her in the Johnny Caw costume. But those dance moves look familiar. Using the guitar playing skills of Johnny Caw and the ballad of Johnny Caw written by Dave Zirfus, we reached more than 60,000 people and had more than 20,000 video views from this social media post. The concept of the social media video and giveaway was simple. Share the video and tell us where in the world you are, and the results were huge. We reached people as far away as Japan, Alaska, Florida, Pennsylvania, and California. Go Johnny, go. On the social media front, as we continue to expand our reach as well as grow impressions, we build more loyal followers who are then likely to engage with us through our created and shared content. By doing this, we increase our reach or impressions to draw interest and attract visitors to Manhattan. All three social media channels, which were Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram, continues to grow consistently at a rate of about 6% to 8% each quarter across all three of those channels. Second quarter impressions were over 576,000 across all three of those channels. This is an increase of about 9% from the end of the first quarter. Facebook impressions have improved by 8%, Twitter by 8%, Instagram by 6%. The high number of impressions are a direct reflection of the increased engagement by followers. As more followers engage, their friends are able to see our posts through their posts and shares. The power of this is evident with our Johnny Caw video that had nearly 500 shares and over 20,000 views. Here is a 30-second commercial we'd like you to watch. in our community for the positive. That video has over 5,000 views with a reach of about 13,000 people. Shares and comments are over 500. The top audience for that is women's ages 45 to 54. All metrics for this video are organic. We did not pay to boost the audience reach. In our community, over 5,000 views is definitely considered viral. Marketing takes money. As we market Manhattan in a variety of ways, we strive to be constant in our messaging. "Oh, Manhattan" is a new tag which is reflected on our billboards, websites, advertising, both print and virtual. Campaigns are on the way with more of that. And I'll say from a personal note, I was actually, I didn't know about a month ago or so, I was driving down interstate and had no idea that we had this out, and I actually saw the sign, caught my eye when I was driving through Salina, so I think they are very well done. Manhattan's best week. We have highlighted just a few of the activities that took place in Manhattan during the second quarter. To date, our highest week of occupancy was March 4 through the 10th with 80.9% occupancy. We had conferences, 2A State Basketball, including Fake Patty's Day celebrations. Our second best, or second most active week was June 17 through the 23rd. We had amazing weather that week as we hosted the 23rd Annual Country Stampede, and our occupancy rate was 77.1% that week. As we look to the future, during the April meeting of the CVB Steering Committee, discussion was held on projects which involve TGT dollars. These projects should have a return on investment as well as have an expiration date for the financial support. Projects such as the proposed conference center expansion improvements of our sports facilities will have a direct impact on hotels, generating room nights. Room nights directly impact our TGT collections. Our community needs to demand our transient guest tax collections remain strong. TGT dollars need to be invested in projects which create additional revenue for Manhattan. To that point, with the Manhattan Conference Center on June 11, an open house was held for meeting planners to attend to review the proposed expansion of the Manhattan Conference Center. Planners were able to review the plans, visit with HCW's architect, and share their meeting needs. Manhattan Conference Center currently offers 16,371 square feet of flexible meeting space with 9,000 square feet of pre-function space. The proposed conference center expansion would add another 14,000 square feet. Visit Manhattan sent a survey to our entire database for planners to react to the proposed plans. 100-plus planners did respond with positive feedback, and here are just a couple of quick notes on what they said. Majority of planners surveyed have Manhattan in their meeting rotation. They hold one to four meetings a year with 41% being over 300 in meeting size. 5% of the planners surveyed hold meetings of over 1,000. 80% of those meetings are one to three days in length, with the purpose of the meetings being either annual or educational. 25% say Manhattan's limitations are due to needing larger meeting venues, and 37% of planners need more breakout rooms. 54% need one to four breakouts, 37% need five to 10 breakout spaces. 36% meet Wednesday through Friday, 28% meet Monday through Wednesday, and 18% meet Friday through Sunday. The CVB Steering Committee favors supportive of the expansion of the conference center and projects that provide a solid return on investment. As to the 2019 budget from the TGTs, in a somewhat flat sales tax year, a bright spot has been the accommodations and food services continues to be one of our strongest sales tax generators. Our research shows that Manhattan welcomes over 350,000 visitors a year, which generate these taxes. Visitors come to shop and dine. We anticipate for 2019, TGT collections directed to the CVB will be a bit over 1.2 million. Our budget varies from year to year due to TGT collections, as this slide reflects. The CVB does not receive the total of the TGT dollars. As the CVB sets the program of work for 2019, we will focus on projects that will expand the opportunities for visitors to come to Manhattan, spend the night, dine, shop, and enjoy our many attractions. As visitors' pocketbooks are emptied into our city coffers, it causes sales tax collections to rise. Proposed highlights planned for 2019 are meeting planner events, website upgrades, social media videos with meeting focus, another with an overview of Manhattan, as well as special events in MHK, larger social media pushes, and programs and marketing targeted to entice visitors to say, "Oh, Manhattan." We thank you for the opportunity to share with you the accomplishments of Manhattan this evening. Manhattan is a great place to visit and live. By continuing to invest in Manhattan through promotion, we all win. Which of you has the first question for us?
Well, I'm gonna save the budget discussion for budget time, but I do want to comment on the numbers you threw out there. I think the more events we have, of course, the better, and it seems like even though there's two hotels, a decrease in rooms, it still keeps going up. Even when we had those two hotels, it was still going up, and it's still going up today. So we'll see how it happens when the Marriott comes up. But I think sports are the big thing. As we look at the two middle schools getting bigger gyms, and the Seaco Park and tennis courts, I wanted to know, how far ahead do those agencies plan their calendars? If we want to do wrestling or... If we want to do wrestling or gymnastics or tennis, whatever it is, how far ahead should we start planning for this?
Certainly. And that's why as in our comments, we talked about sports planners. Certainly, we have educated, and Marcia is really our voice as she interfaces with sports planners and sports organizers. Sports organizers are not any different than meeting planners, only in the fact that they usually are around competition when a meeting planner is more about presenting. So it's very important for us to have those relationships, to be in those publications that they read, whether they are on websites or actually the old-fashioned print publications, to let them know what is moving forward. So we feel that our efforts are exactly in line. Many times those organizers are two to three years out because they also are in rotation, have had commitments in other communities. They're looking at us, it's a little difficult at this point in time to, we're greasing the wheel if you wish, to tell them of what is coming on. With that half-cent sales tax increase, the extension with what we know is coming on is very important. We also keep track of those entities that we have lost. The USA Swimming Meet, there would be no way that even if we had what we all dream about facility, that we could ever host that. But it's important to know that Manhattan was, at least had that bid arrive in our inboxes. The badminton competition though, could be something that we could host. We currently have six courts, they needed 10 in order to do that. So with our accommodations, with what our offerings are in the future, it's important for us to keep those communications open and going and informed. In our plan for next year and beyond, not only do we meet with meeting planners, we also will be keeping in touch with sports planners too. And we do that with an electronic communication currently with meeting planners. We also are hosting in September, a meeting planner event where it's called a fam trip, a familiarization trip, that we have extended invitations to those organizers so that they can come see Manhattan at a very busy time, but also have an overview of what Manhattan's offerings are. So I believe our staff, our advisory committee is very focused on those things that help bring events to our community that drive that transient guest tax. So that's how, at this point in time, we see marketing now.
Yeah, and I've been meeting with our Parks and Rec and I'll be meeting with some other people from the Chamber, probably even Marcia, I'm meeting with Gail and all these people, mainly because I want to do an aggressive push for the things that we do have coming our way. Because one of the reasons we're doing it is, if we build it, they will come mentality. So instead of waiting for it to be built, I would like to have our name out there as aggressively as possible. We don't have to know the exact deadlines when the ball fields will be up and going, but I think we need to be on that, everybody else's radar that plan those things according to their academic year, because we're in competition with everybody else.
Absolutely.
And that was the revenue source that we sold to the community. And I want to make sure that that takes care of our operational cost, because the building cost is what the community put in their sales tax money for. So that's why I want us to, I understand about badminton and all of the ones we can't get, we're not building the facilities for those events. They might be in the future, but if it's pickleball, if it's anything that's for indoors. So those were some of the things that Judy Randall was telling us about as far as sporting events. So I want to see what that looks like and work towards that much more in collaborative partnership along with K-State and all the other agencies that work on these things. I don't know what it looks like, this is new to me, but I certainly want to be a proponent of it and support it as much as I can, because in the next two to three, five, three to five years, we're going to have those facilities up and going and I want to see teams coming and playing on them.
Another thing doesn't get counted in on that, and I think I maybe mentioned this last time, but when you, I have an eight-year-old son and I would rather stay and play a tournament here. Those dollars don't get counted in that, but I would rather stay here as opposed to going to Topeka or Kansas City or Salina. And if I don't spend money on hotels and stuff there, I have more money to spend here in our own community. I don't think that gets counted a lot of times on that stuff. I think that's extremely important as well.
It's the other team we count on.
Well, we want them, but if we keep our teams here too, that's.
Yeah, that's right. No, I agree. Ben?
In the previous slide on your budget, your funding request, it looked like the increase was around $25,000, $27,000. Was that for any particular increase and ask for funding for any particular reason or is it just kind of a cola going up or why is the request larger than it was last year?
That's just simply as we figured that and what would possibly be going away, is you can see that what the total transient guest tax collections are estimated to be, and again, that's estimation, is 1.8. If, as the decision is made as to how those funds then are dispersed, we've never received the total full amount. And so we estimate that, again, as we plan for our budget, we would be very grateful to receive 1.2, if not more. But you guys have a huge decision which to make. And it's important, again, as both of these men have designated that they want to see, we want to see our dollars being used in which we can promote Manhattan as a place to come to.
All right, thank you.
Just a couple. One of the things we've been trying to do here for a couple of years is associate the money that's being spent with the revenue that's being generated as a result of tourism and so on. So a couple of questions. On your hotel rates, you showed 62 for this year versus 58s, 59s in previous years. Just want to make sure that's through, all of it's through May, is that correct?
Yes.
So what can we attribute the difference to this year?
You're looking at this slide that I have up, right? Yeah. So as you look at the difference in occupancy, much of that goes with there are many, many conferences, sporting events.
I mean, there has to be maybe just a couple. If you can just say things like, we're having more conferences or we're having more sporting events. I don't know what it is.
Sure, sure. I can tell you that the next slide, this probably reflects it more. Look at how January, February and March are really increasingly higher than what they have been previously. Obviously, there's ups and downs. What we had for those first three months, Fort Riley had a training that was taking place that filled multiple properties for a longer period of time. So next year, as our staff works diligently to continue to backfill, your January and February might not look as strong next year as it did this year. Much of that was due to that long stay of that military.
If the total revenue is 11 million or so this year through May, is it typically 24, 25 million for the year? What's that number?
Yeah, I don't have that. I can get that to you, what the total for the year end, just my information that I have with me here, I don't have it.
I'm just trying to extrapolate to kind of see what would be at 7%, what we're going to be at at the end of the year. I suppose the staff has that anyway. I heard some encouraging things. You know, I'm trying to remember, when I look at the city managers' monthly reports in terms of the number of conventions we've had, the number of sporting events we've had, the number of likes that we've had on social media. So I think, Ben, you were talking about we've had 6% to 8% quarter-over-quarter growth, which surprised me. I mean, it's in a good way, but I haven't seen that throughout the year, looking at the city managers' reports, which includes the CVB. So I'd be interested in, I'm always interested in seeing what year-over-year changes have been made. So if I can see what, like 15, 16, 17, 18, what the sporting event numbers have drawn differently.
That was fan base too, that I was referencing. So like, number of people, not necessarily the individual posts, I believe is what that was referencing.
Right. As well as, to your point, we can include that in those monthly reports for you. We have Facebook impressions, we have Twitter impressions and Instagram, but we can also indulge that a little bit more.
Because too often, all we see is a snapshot.
Right.
And the snapshot, at least for me, doesn't tell me anything. I mean, if you're putting money into something, what you hope to see is we're increasing our returns 3% every quarter because we're doing great advertising or something.
Right.
So I just encourage you to keep that up. I mean, the numbers you're quoting are very encouraging and hopefully we can do that. I've got some for the staff on some of the numbers, but I think that's good for me.
Okay, I had a question and maybe Karen, you have a memo that I wanted to ask a question about. So we have, of course, during the last year, we increased the transient guest tax by 1% to 7%. And the anticipated for the 2019 budget would be 1.682 million. And I just wondered, if that revenue doesn't come in, then what, how, we won't have it to give to you.
Right.
Do you have contingency plans?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's what is such a challenge with our budget, is we can plan, but if those monies in those receipts do not come in, sometimes programs cannot be carried out as planned. So yeah, that's a challenge. Sometimes the check isn't always as big as what we had anticipated.
It's projected to be higher and it probably will be. I don't remember when it, did we do the six, go from six to seven at the beginning of last year or was it partway through the year? It seemed like it wasn't all year. I'm not, the beginning? Okay.
Because we did the notice that we have a full year.
A full year, okay. Then the estimate is for the full year and that's what I wanted, I was hoping. Okay. I do have a question, more for Ron probably, but maybe, I don't know. It says the city will retain $260,000 for return on investment projects, specifically the conference center expansion and sports facilities improvements. I just, could you explain that a bit?
Well, it's Karen's letter. I'm going to let her speak to that. But there was some discussion and we provided you that early in the budget session, specifically more related to the sports and the concept of, I know her board has had a lot of discussion about taking the 1% that's dedicated to the Discovery Center and putting it more towards community events or sporting events specifically for that use. And then we had looked at using the special park and recreation funds to do some of the support for the Discovery Center. And that's something I pointed out in tonight's memo for, certainly want some discussion and feedback on. So, and I'm assuming that Karen's saying that you might want to use some of that for conference center expansion too.
And that expands on what in our April meeting, the Steering Committee meeting, that's what the discussion was, those dollars that possibly are being, not possibly, that are being directed elsewhere, for those to go so that they would be going for an investment, a project that would show direct return on investment. The conference center is expanded, allows us to host more conferences.
But specifically, what will the 260,000?
Well, and that would be, that would be either for conference center or for sports facilities is what the wishes of the Steering Committee also discussed.
Okay, what is the purpose, what will it, what is the purpose of the 260,000? It's a certain, is it a certain percent of the 1.682? Is it?
It's about equivalent to 1%.
For design, is it for?
Right now, right now, that, there's about 240,000 roughly going to debt service or will be going to debt service on the new sports turf.
All of it will, I believe, right Hillary?
What?
It's the Annenberg sports.
So the 260 is a reference of this year's budgetary support that's going to the Flint Hills Discovery Center for the general fund. So what's being asked is that in 2019, that support turned over to help fund the Annenberg debt and bond and interest, which is a $228,000 payment as well as the conference center and 93,000, which was similar, the exact same thing that we did in 2018.
And that's basically the turf at Annenberg?
Yes, it's all of the improvements out at Annenberg Park.
Annenberg, okay. I just didn't connect the dots, I guess, from the memo to the budget page. Okay, thank you. Specifically about the, I can say that I really appreciate the effort that you go to. I see everyone here and you come every time you're needed. You're a dedicated group. Our city commission meetings are exciting, right? And I think you do a really good job. I can't imagine our community without that boost and that effort that you make. You know, it matters and it's always positive and I think about Johnny Caw and the social phenomenon that that is, a social media phenomenon, and how you can make something out of, not a lot, but something. It's a great, just adventure and fun thing and we're learning from it as we all go along that road. So I am supportive of your request for the one, I think 1.2 million is your request, which is pretty comparable to last year. And my only worry is that it is sales tax based and I just, I just am concerned that the sales tax revenues haven't been, are not going up. They're trending down. And Ron suggested a meeting or two ago that that was probably for the rest of the year and into next year. So I just want to be really conservative.
So a little clarification.
But it's based on tax.
It is, but it's based on specific facilities that, on occupancy, and it's not discretionary of whether you're, you're not going to shop necessarily, but we collect sales taxes on those facilities as well.
Sure, we do. But it's at the same rate that all of the other sales taxes. I mean, it's, you have to spend a dollar to get 7% or whatever some of these other percentages are, so it's comparable.
The only thing I'd say on that is that so far this year, it's up. You look at the last column. So the things that are generating perhaps more revenue than some of our other retail outlets are the hotels and restaurants.
And the volume, the number of activities. Just having said that, a caution. Anyone else? Okay, very good. Thank you, you have more.
Thank you, I was just going to respond to, one more comment to Commissioner Dodson on much of our social media. If you recall back when Judy Randall came and gave us guidance as to what we needed to improve on, social media was one of those things that really needed to be pushed. That's what you are seeing, that's what we are showing, that. And we'll take to heart what you had said of showing that on a monthly basis, even a little more clear. But certainly, we know that social media is where people are viewing, gaining, learning about us. That's why those efforts with those video clips that we showed you this evening, all of those have been with the social media in mind. So thank you for your positive comments. I can speak on behalf of our entire team. It is with joy that we represent this community. Manhattan is a great place to visit with many, many offerings and it takes all of us working together in which to deliver that message. So thank you for receiving our report this evening and now for, we're the fun group, so now I think we get to turn it over to, is it economic development?
A heavy topic.
Well, we're getting set up for our next present, is it just continue on that one?
I think that one, is that you guys, the other one? Uh-oh, lost you. I think, that one, is that you guys? The other one? Uh-oh, lost you.
A final comment on the Convention and Visitors Bureau. I think it's a significant piece that, just a few years ago, we started, I think it tries to address, uh, maybe Commissioner Dodson, but everybody's, uh, question, is that, the Commission, I think, challenged the Convention and Visitors Bureau and said, what is that return on the investment we're, we're giving you? And that's when we went out and reached out to Judy Randall, which is, uh, considered one of the top experts in the country, and several of you got a chance to sit through some of her presentations, her suggestions and her ideas. And the Convention and Visitors Bureau, Karen and her staff have followed her suggestions to a T. And I think what you're seeing is, if you look at, if you go back to that chart, and you go back just four years ago, and look at the revenue, four years ago versus today, I'm talking about total revenue that's come in to our community, it's over $2 million. And I think that's pretty significant, um, at least to, to that point in the, in, in where we are this year. And, uh, I think those dollars are significant. I think they reflect some of the changes that were made, some of the more aggression in the social media, and we hired a social media person, full-time. Um, and I think those are the kinds of things that are beginning to pay off, plus the work of our staff. And the suggestions, everything from the visitor's guide, uh, to the billboards that you're seeing now, those are all direct results of what Judy came in and said, these are the things you need to do. And so, we have followed those, and I think those are producing the results that, that you are beginning to see, and I think you'll continue to see into the future. And I'm encouraged, because I agree with Commissioner Dodson, that when you look at Bernie's stuff that he sends out every month, the one shining part is the accommodations and restaurants are up. And so, I think we don't want to do anything to take that backwards. Uh, what we need to do is figure out the rest of them. So, that leads into economic development. How's that for a transition?
What an intro.
What an intro. I, I'm here just to, to present a couple of, um, slides, um, and I think that, um, economic development is a constant challenge. And, and I hope all of you in the community look at what the, what the Manhattan Chamber and what you contract for us to do is to market Manhattan. Uh, we market it through getting visitors here, but we market it to keep people in our community, keep businesses in our community, but to attract business and industry of all different, uh, of all different types. And one of the things, uh, when I came here 18 years ago, I was challenged by the then Board of Directors of the Manhattan Chamber and said, we need to raise more money for economic development to make an impact, to make a difference in, in our community. And I, I'm very pleased to say, um, and this slide and the next one I'll show in just a moment, continues to show where the money comes from for economic development. The easier course would have been to come to the city and the county and say, you all need to give us another half a million dollars a year so we can do economic development. But the business community said, we benefit from this, but we need to do it in partnership. And we continue to do that in partnership with all of you. And the revenue, uh, that is coming to, to fund the economic development operation, the day-to-day operation of the Economic Development Division comes from the private sector. And so, we continue to show, and this next slide, I think is an, an even starker graphic, that I came here in 2000, and you can, if you go back to the left-hand side of the chart, you can see the darker purple line is the private sector funding, and the public funding coming specifically from the city is the lighter blue line. And we have not come, I have not come, the Chamber Board of Directors has not come and said, we need more money from the city. What we needed was your partnership, your staff, um, the efforts of the Sales Tax Initiative that the voters passed to provide economic development dollars, uh, to focus on, uh, helping to attract and retain companies to build a workforce. And that's where you all have played a, a very, very, very important role. But I think as you can look at this chart through 2018, then you can continue to see the stair stepping of where the private sector has given millions and millions and millions of dollars out of their own pockets, uh, to support the economic development efforts of the Manhattan Area Chamber of Commerce. And they're doing it because it also helps Manhattan. They also recognize that it isn't just about putting money in their pockets, it's putting money in the, in the coffers by creating sales tax and net new property tax, uh, by new buildings or buildings that are being expanded. And I think that's an important message that, that we all need to understand and communicate to the general public, that the Chamber is not here to take money, we're here to give money back. And this, um, I hope, is a chart that, uh, is embedded, and I've tried to show, show it every year, uh, since we go back, um, to the early 2000s, as to how the private sector continues to add money, uh, to the economic development trends. And I think you're gonna hear, um, when Matt comes up later and talking about the next phase of our economic development effort, is that the private sector is gonna have to once again add additional money in order to make sure that we have a very successful growth program. I'm gonna introduce, uh, John Pagan, uh, who is our Vice President of Community Development, and John has been with us since 2004. So, again, we've got a lot of history and length here, uh, at the Chamber and, and our, uh, staff that we have. So, John's got a few slides that he's gonna present.
Thank you, Lyle. Um, pleasure to be here this evening. Uh, just a couple of quick slides. This is a slide I, I keep updating. This is from the Kansas Department of Labor, uh, and going back to January of 2002, the leftmost column with numbers, and that's when the clock started on the first Advantage Manhattan campaign. So, that's where we kind of put the stake in the ground in terms of employment levels. So, just to follow along with Manhattan, when this, uh, Advantage Manhattan program started, there were 22,325 people employed in town. As of April of 2018, there was over 29,450. That's a net gain of employment of over 7,000. That's a 32% increase. Uh, that net growth represents, uh, that would put us fifth out of those 16 communities shown, and it's second in terms of percentage at 32%. And it's interesting to note, if you look on the, uh, percentage, the other communities that are right clustered around us are Olathe, Lenexa, Overland Park, that Kansas City metro area. So, it's, I think it's still amazing that we are right in the pack with those communities in the Kansas City metro, in terms of growth of our employed level. Uh, this is a six-by-nine inch card mailer that we just sent out a little while ago. We're still tabulating results. We've gotten some good feedback already. This was sent to the medical people who have a K-State Alumni Association tie, and we, and do not live in the tri-county region of Geary, Riley, or Potawatomi County, and are one of several, um, medical professions, from skilled nursing to doctors, et cetera. And we sent this mailer out. You don't even have to tear open an envelope, it's just a very quick hit, reminding them of what a nice town Manhattan is, and to think about maybe coming back here to continue your medical career. So, we're gonna see how this goes. If it's a success, we'll continue. If it's not, we'll try something else. But we're trying to tap into the fact that people who have spent time here like it, and may want to come back if an opportunity presents itself. And we had a couple of really good workforce initiatives this year, which are gonna continue next year. We had Career Exploration Days with, um, USD 383. We happened to do this with high school kids this year. We're still working on what age group we're gonna do next year. Um, a lot of people in this room, actually, their businesses, uh, both sponsored and held tours, and it was great. That's, that picture there is a bunch of kids who were there on the first day at Manhattan High. We also did a classroom to career partnership at the bottom. All 22 4th grade classes in USD 383 were matched with a sponsor business who paid money, and they all got T-shirts, they went on field trips, they talked about what they do, and it was just to kind of give kids an idea of what's going on in Manhattan. That picture happens to be of Jim Janette with the Technical College, and there's another initiative that they did, um, with faculty from USD 383, to have them come to the campus of the Technical College to see all that's going on there, because there's so much going on. We want the teachers to be aware, and as it is now, over, you know, several hundred kids from the high school, uh, take classes through the Technical College or affiliated with it for at least one of their classes. We want that relationship to strengthen, that there's all sorts of options for training in Manhattan. Um, and this, real quick, we ended up on the cover of the Kansas School Board Review magazine. That picture in the top right, the kids in the shirts, that's at Metal Arc Hills. That's Jamie Minton with Metal Arc. That was the class that they sponsored. They brought them to Metal Arc. So, it was, uh, in its first year, it made the front page of that School Board Review, so we're very proud of that. And just a couple more slides. This was an employment and networking showcase. This was initially championed by Dr. Cheryl Greis at K-State, and one of the photos shows Karen from, Karen Hibbert from the Chamber, talking about all there is to do in Manhattan. This was structured for soldiers who are gonna be transitioning out of the military, to tell them there's jobs here, training opportunities here, great quality of life here, and we're gonna continue to do this more. Plus, the bottom right, they toured Civic Plus. The bottom left, they toured Florence Manufacturing. We're really trying to tap into that transitioning military group and tell them there's, there's great opportunities to stay in this region and find work and to make a life here. And lastly, our Communities to Call Home. This is a program with the Flint Hills Regional Council. We leveraged a grant from the Minnesota Housing Partnership. We have literally a couple of dozen communities in the area. We, they each get one page of a website. Uh, they can put three pictures on that page, and it's to kind of show people, for example, for NBAF, coming for NBAF. You don't just have to live necessarily in a big city. There's all sorts of options in the region, if you want a house in the country, if you want to live in a smaller, more historic town, or whatever. 26, I believe it's 26 communities have signed up for this. And they really appreciate the outreach that the Flint Hills Regional Council and Manhattan and the K-State Institute for Commercialization have made to some of the smaller communities. And it feels good to be able to do that, because it's nice to, to bring them in and show that they're partners, and we want them to succeed as well. And of course, if they do well, we all do well. And just, I cannot leave without talking about some of the accolades. This is just the last two years. Our consultant from Market Street Services told me again, you know, that there's like three communities in the US that get as many as we do. I mean, I'm talking quality accolades, where you're not buying an advertisement and then they write a puff piece. This is independent research. So, you know, livability, we were the number two best place in the country this year. One point behind Ann Arbor, Michigan, 943 points, I believe, to 944, um, back close to being number one. Uh, last year, no surprise, number one town gun relations in Princeton Review, uh, number two mid-sized community for Riley County from Fourth Economy. That was a consulting firm that did a, a consulting study on Manhattan several years ago. So, it was nice that we still, um, stayed on their radar screen. And that's all qualitative. That's looking at, uh, all quantitative, rather, looking at, uh, livability, talent, safety, things like that. We're a top 10 place for entrepreneurs, and one of the 10 best college towns in America from the American Institute for Economic Research. Again, no one of these, you're, you can't, you know, live or die with any one. We get so many from so many different sources. I think it paints a very compelling picture of what a great town this is, and why these things we're doing about workforce and reaching out to students. It's a very good argument we can make about that this is a real good place to stay. And on that note, I will hand it off to Janet Nichols, who's our Military Community Liaison, who works with the military and trying to convince them to stay in this area. Janet?
Hello, everyone. Thanks for having me. Um, I'm starting out with, um, the Advice Program. It kind of references back a little bit to the slide with Soldier for Life and K-State, where K-State facilitated a visit from the Soldier for Life Transition Assistance Program here in Manhattan. Um, I, but I, I thought of this a long time ago, and this is a partnering program between soldiers transitioning out of the Army, uh, hopefully retiring, but i-if they're transitioning out and have an idea that they'd like to stay in Manhattan. Um, the idea is to partner them with, uh, a member of the Chamber who's in a field that, of in, of interest to them, and, uh, facilitate a professional relationship through already existing programming at the Chamber. I suggest five events to attend, two Business After Hours, two Good Morning Manhattans, and, um, excuse me, two, two Military Relations Lunches and a Good Morning Manhattan. But that way, you get a wide variety of people. The idea is for them to meet people, learn networking skills. I also have, um, would like an incorporated, uh, work shadowing with their advisor, the, the veteran's advisor who they're paired up with. The advisor would pay the cost of going to those five events, um, which is less than $100. Um, and hopefully, we could attract and keep quality workforce members here in Manhattan. Um, it's gonna launch at the September MRC. I already have a few people, um, uh, from my MRC Board who have signed up to be advisors. I've spoken with Soldier for Life, um, and they are very eager for me, for me to get this off the ground and going. So, um, I'm really looking forward to it, and I really think that it's gonna be positive. So, um, after, the next MRC lunch is the combined Victory Week Lunch, um, that's really large, and General Koloszewski, the new commanding general, will be the speaker. I just got that confirmed last Friday. I'm very excited, and I think that one's a little, little big to launch this, so it'll be September. Um, these are just some events from the past year. Um, the first one at, at my top left, your top left, is an MRC Lunch. That's Jed Dunham from K-State presenting on, um, basically a lost helicopter from the first Gulf War. It was really touching. We had people from the First Aviation Brigade attend that lunch who were in the Gulf War. We had the Aviation Brigade Commander come all the way from Alabama. It was an amazing day. Um, not all MRC Lunches are, are that touching, but, but we, we consistently get at least 100 people at every lunch, um, and sometimes from as far as Kansas City or Salina, depending on what the topic is. Uh, below is rodeo, which is coming up on the 26th of this month. Last year, it was unseasonably cool. Uh, I literally ran out of food. I had never had that happen. We had around 400 soldiers in the tent for the pre-rodeo picnic. Uh, we gave away, um, about 1,200 tickets, uh, for free. We had sponsors pay for those tickets so they could attend and support the rodeo. It really is a fun event. I have a sad feeling that it will not be as unseasonably cool this year, but I have my hopes. Um, and then up at the top right is, uh, Veterans Day Parade, which we are in the process of planning this year. I am the current Flint Hills Veterans Coalition Day President. Uh, and now that I've made all these arrangements, because it wasn't seasonably cold for Veterans Day last year, um, I'm worried that it'll be 70 degrees because we have blankets, heaters and coffee planned for the reviewing stand. Um, we are the largest Veterans Day Parade in the state, and as Carter Hamm, who was our guest speaker last year, said to me, is my favorite quote of 2017, "There's no place on earth I'd rather be for Veterans Day than in Manhattan, Kansas." Um, he's a former, uh, commanding general of the First ID in Fort Riley, and he's the current president of the Association in the United States Army. He's a retired four-star general. And to the below right, um, I'm in that picture somewhere. That was the inaugural, uh, Defense Communities Leadership Class that I applied for and got accepted to. It was put on by the Association of Defense Communities and a group called Blue Star Families. Um, it was scol, it was scholarship-based. They raised the funds, and it was, there was very nominal, um, expense for the Chamber for me to attend that event. It was a whirlwind. Um, I had heard of Blue Star Families before. I'd been associated with, uh, Association of Defense Communities for a few years through the Great American Defense Communities Program. Um, but Blue Star Families puts out an annual survey. Um, I think Commissioner Ready, I've sent it to you, and you've seen it. It really covers a lot of good ground. Um, and I've learned a lot through them. There isn't a chapter locally. I'm in the process of getting one off the ground. They're big, uh, they're really into military community integration, both active-duty military, retired community, uh, military, and the civilian community. They feel that, um, through that integration, in the long term, it, it, it helps military through their career and outside of their career. And I think it fits in really well with the Advice Program, which is another way of integrating the military with the community while they're here. Um, I think, oh, look at that. Uh, this is the Kansas Military Alliance. Um, when I started going to Association of Defense Communities meetings, I realized that other states and other really big states with a lot of military, they all knew each other, Texas, California, Florida. So, I started, I started working on making a Kansas alliance, because I didn't know anybody at Wichita. I didn't know anybody at Leavenworth, and those are where the other large military installations are in the state of Kansas. This inaugural meeting, uh, took place in May. It was supposed to start earlier in the year, but we had some inclement weather. Um, and I had, and we got people from across the state. We invited, um, uh, someone who has a similar job to me as a military liaison from McConnell, Salina, that's the Salina representative up there, and, uh, the Governor's Military Counsel Perry Wiggins. Um, we had representatives from K-State and the University of Kansas Military Relations. We had representatives from Topeka, um, and Kansas City, and from the Kemper Foundation, Veterans Foundation in Kansas City. Foundation in Kansas City. We have, are expanding it, we're inviting more people, I'm hoping to get someone from Leavenworth next time, hopefully it'll fit in their schedule. We have two more meetings scheduled for this year. I was really pleasantly surprised, I really thought everybody would say, hey, this is great, nice to know you, see you next year, and they really want to get to work, they really want to make Kansas the best place for the military to live and work and retire. So with that, I think that's it for me, and I'm going to refer to Trent Armbrist, the Director of Economic Development, and again, I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you, Janet.
Thank you, Janet. Trent Armbrist, Director of Economic Development, and thank you for the time tonight. First slide tonight, I want to go over is what I call the confusion slide for a lot of people, is they hear about all the different entities in the area, and so on the left-hand side, you'll see the Manhattan Economic Development, and the activities that we do through the Chamber, and that's existing business growth. We've just had an Economic Development Senate Request that the Commission supported with Ultra ICE as an example of existing business growth. Our business recruitment, we continue to have that pipeline full, entrepreneurship, I'll touch on in a minute. Talent, and one thing you'll notice on all three of the entities is talent, talent leads everything we do in economic development today. Talent is the number-one issue when locating or expanding a business. Advocacy, we continue to spend time working at state, federal, and locally, issues around economic development and being active with the advocacy piece. Community development, John's activity in the Region Reimagine, and then also Economic Development Asset Development, and we will get into that as well at the end of the slide, at the end of the presentation. So that's what we do inside the Manhattan Chamber. You have the Greater Manhattan Economic Partnership, which is brand-new this year, started in 2018, and that is funded through a partner in Potawatomi County, the Potawatomi County Economic Development Corporation, and private sector dollars through the Advantage Manhattan Program. This is really, think of this as more the traditional economic development, we're focused on land and buildings, recruiting businesses, helping expand the local business or existing businesses, and then also working on some talent development on a regional basis. And the existing business growth, to compare those between what we do at the Chamber and what we do through the Economic Partnership, is Ultra ICE was a project that I worked through the Manhattan Chamber. Examples of existing business growth through the Greater Manhattan Economic Partnership are those businesses that have a lot of overlap between the two communities, and in those particular businesses, Jack Alston, who's the Director of Economic Development for Potawatomi County, and I go and visit those businesses together. So we work in concert, and we've also had examples before this partnership was formed, and even today, where we're helping businesses grow, and maybe there's one in Riley County that needs to grow, but we don't have the facility or the land for it to grow, then we're working with Potawatomi County first to accommodate that growth. So that's why we work together for existing business growth. And then on the far right is K-BED, or Knowledge-Based Economic Development, and this is a partnership between the university, North Central Planning, the Chamber, the city, and then recently, Potawatomi County also joined the K-BED team. This is really focused on that knowledge and technology-based companies that have an association with the university. And so that's really the differentiating key there, if it has a tie to the university, we go through K-BED because we have the university at the table with us. So we focused on business recruitment, we've used K-BED for some of our business expansion, really because of that talent connection, but also sometimes the faculty expertise involved, and then we've had a strong emphasis on innovation and entrepreneurship. So those are the three local economic development efforts that we have. One example of the K-BED efforts as far as recruitment goes is the ads that we have in the Kansas City Options Magazine, this is through Kansas City Area Development Council, and this is an ad drawing people in Kansas City to see what we have in Manhattan, because we feel like there's a lot of opportunity through the Animal Health Corridor and our other entities that are in Kansas City, that we can grab some expansion growth in Manhattan that may originate from Kansas City, and Kansas City is also an important part of our network for bringing companies and making companies aware of Manhattan. So this is just an example of one of those ads. Partnerships is really the theme of the front part of my talk, these are all the other partners that we work with. Kansas Department of Commerce, really important for our lead generation, for recruiting businesses, but they also help us with expanding local businesses with some of the state programs. And we can go through each one of these, but each one of these is critical in different points of a business recruitment or expansion project. And that's part of our job, is to bring these assets together as they're needed, to put together the right team to help a business. You'll also see some advocacy pieces in there with Metal, which is the Manhattan Emporium Topeka and Lawrence efforts, but then also our efforts in, with Kansas Research Nexus, which is the Manhattan, Topeka, and Lawrence Economic Development Groups working together on projects, and so a lot of important partners there. One that you don't see up there that I want to address separately tonight, and really thank the City of Manhattan, they're our biggest partner in economic development in what we do, and I thank the Commission for all their support, and all the staff members that are sharing in this room are great team members, and it's a real pleasure to work with the City of Manhattan, and there is, everything we do includes the city, and they're a vital partner, so I just want to thank the city for being a great economic development partner. Want to do another partner that we have that's not involved in some of those formal partnerships that we work with closely, and that's Gary County Junction City, and want to congratulate them on a new announcement they had a few weeks ago, the ceremony is actually this Friday, but it's CAMSO. CAMSO is a company that makes treads for tires, snowmobiles, the tracks that you see on tractors, and they are expanding in Kansas. The City of Junction City issued $40 million IRB to help with this expansion, they're moving into an existing building that was there. Junction City First, which is their private fundraising, was also at the table, as well as obviously the Gary County and Junction City Economic Development Efforts. So just want to applaud them, and really excited about this regional growth, and we're already seeing the ads in our newspapers, I don't know if you've noticed in the Mercury, but they're already advertising for positions, and so again, excited to have this growth in the region.
How many jobs do they expect?
Forty.
Forty, okay.
Jared hasn't seen this before, but the rest of you have, and I'm not going to go over the details of this, other than say, when you're looking at innovation and you're looking at companies grow, it takes a lot of different pieces to come together to help a company. And so we have one really good example that announced this year, and that's Enzo Discoveries. Enzo Discoveries is located on the west side of Manhattan, and this is an outgrowth of another business by some entrepreneurs who really wanted to focus on the veterinary market, and they have two key products right now, stem cell processing, and then also, as you see on the left, that PRP, which is platelet-rich plasma, and that helps with wound healing in animals. And so they've taken some human technology, applied it to veterinary medicine, and now they have these truly unique products for the veterinary market, both here in the United States and overseas. So they offer some unique services, they've built their own laboratory, they've done their own product development, and as they've gone through that, they've used KSU as a partner for their research and development and the validation of their products. They went to Manhattan Area Technical College, and they've hired two of their graduates that were trained in the laboratory sciences, and then through our efforts, we've introduced them to the Kansas City Animal Health Corridor, Bio Kansas and Bio Nexus, and those connections are helping them advance their products, and I didn't do this in the right order, but PG Biotech is a new company that they're spinning out with a new product. So tying all this together, that big chart of all that web, all of that comes together to help our local entrepreneurs develop and grow their businesses in Manhattan. Now we're going to shift gears to some of our assets that we have in Manhattan that are really important for economic development, and the KEC, again, is a city-owned facility that is managed by the Manhattan Chamber, it does pay property taxes, and the good news is, we're completely full. And some of the companies that are there, just to review, Extratech at the very top, they make extrusion equipment that is used to make pet food and fish food, we have Advana Seed, they are a breeder here, working on sorghum. NEON, which is the National Ecological Observation Network, they do a lot of work out at Konzer Prairie. Transdesk is a local student out of K-State who started a stand-up desk business, offices out there, and also warehouses in the KEC. Medical Search Associates, headhunter firm for healthcare professionals, and then Project D-Lab, which we can't announce yet, but is undergoing renovation, and that will be a laboratory that serves not just Manhattan, but also the region in food chemistry. The revenue is, obviously we have the leases, so we're leased up, we've got the revenue to continue to invest in the property, and just some examples, in the D-Labs, the Chamber itself, through our revenue, is spending $55,000 on upgrades, and the company is also spending about $50,000. So we're investing in that area of that building, increasing the quality of the laboratory space. We're also addressing building security, card readers, cameras, things like that, it is a multi-tenant facility, and so we want to increase that building security and management. And then we have some large building system items that will need to be addressed, and again, we're using that rent revenue to address those items and invest in the facility, and then we also hired a handyman this year that's just coming in doing routine repairs and keeping it up to its best, the best that we can. Manhattan Business Park, a lot of things going on out there, and we're very excited about that, we've been in front of you several times to discuss this. In 2017, we had Pioneer Seed, and that building is up, it's finished. You see in Lot 4, Kansas Gas at the very top, if you haven't driven out there lately, that building is out of the ground, the steel's up, the siding's up, and they're starting to do some interior work, so we're very excited about that progress with Kansas Gas Building. We also rezoned the lots, so that there is uniform zoning throughout the business park. And then 2018, we've already discussed Ultra Electronics, and again, thank you for your support, and that's designated for Lot 12, and then we are under negotiations for Lot 11, and then you can see that we have proposals on several lots, or combination of lots, and in addition, this week even, we had another company reach out, and they're looking at three more lots in the business park that are not covered on the map. So it starts to say that demand is really high right now for the Manhattan Business Park, but it also starts to make us question, where next? This is the only property we have available that's shovel-ready in Riley County in Manhattan. Our biggest lot, if all of that goes through, our biggest lot is going to be four acres. That's going to seriously hamper our ability to grow in Manhattan, so we really need to start to address the next business park. So just to review a little bit, partnerships, really, really important for what we do in economic development, we can't be successful without all those partners, local, state, and at the national level. Growth of the entrepreneurial ecosystem, this is part of Region Reimagined as well. We need to continue to focus on that, grow our own, if you look back at some of the great companies in Manhattan, many of them were entrepreneurial and started in Manhattan. Look at developing those innovation districts, that incubator accelerator, we don't have a true incubator or accelerator in this community, and we don't have the programs to support entrepreneurial growth and the incubator accelerator facility. We've got to look at critical spaces like laboratory supply, we do not have any available laboratories except for one 900-square-foot lab. Once that fills, what do we do with the next bioscience company? These companies don't come in and they don't build, they want to rent, and so we have to have that supply ready and available in order to meet that opportunity, and we've already addressed the next business in industrial park. And I bring up the business in industrial park, and if you look at the lower photo, that's a modern manufacturing facility, not a lot of people, a lot of space, but it's clean, and that's really the new business in industrial park that we're talking about. Last two thoughts before I wrap up, and we ask, are available for questions. Staggering statistic, by 2020, 50% of the global workforce is born in the last three decades. Really talks to, and Matt's going to talk about, Region Reimagined, what type of community are we developing that will attract this workforce so that we stay competitive? Talent is the lead for economic development. This last slide's a little blurry, so I apologize for that, but economic development has made a real shift in the last few years. Several years ago, we would have talked about business development only, are we business retention, expansion, recruitment, and startups, that entrepreneurship, and we would have brought in their business parks and things like that, that's that very traditional economic development. Economic development has shifted to having three key pieces, and you notice talent development's at the top, that's not by mistake. Then we have the traditional business development, and we also have the place-making, where do people want to live, work, and play? And that's a critical part of how economic development has moved forward, and as you'll see with Region Reimagined, that's going to help us make this paradigm shift in this community. And I put this up here, it was done by Janet Addy, and she's really a thought leader in economic development, and she'll be our guest at the Kansas Economic Development Alliance Meeting in the fall, but this is how economic development has really shifted, and so it's important that we as a community make that shift so we're competitive on a global basis. And with that, we are done with our presentation, happy to answer any questions.
A lot of great thinking going on, I appreciate all the effort, typically appreciate all the efforts going on on workforce development, I think that's critical. And John, on one of your slides, you know, you went from where it was 2002 to 2018, but you know, we've got other venues where we've looked at the statistics between maybe 2015 and 2018, and it's not quite so promising, we're a little flat, so...
It's plateaued a little bit, yeah.
So whatever we can do on workforce development's important. The other thing, as some of us went up to Fort Collins, they had some of this same initiative, and that was the introduction of younger kids to different kinds of employment opportunities. So, you know, typically, what we've done in the past is expose them, maybe when they're sophomores or juniors in high school, so that one program that you showed where we're getting fourth graders involved, I think is really important, that just gets young people thinking about what the possibilities are, things need to be considered a long time in advance of commitment. Maybe on that one slide, we need to make that rocky road yellow or something, I don't know, it's a field. So on the next business park, Trent, I mean, it's encouraging that we're filling up, but when we look at Riley County, Pot County, is that kind of the next reasonable available space, given that inside the city limits is pretty constrained?
Yeah, I think we need to look at a lot of options, Commissioner, one of the things we don't have in this area is rail access, and that's becoming higher and higher demand as freight costs go up over road. We also need to look at just really where some of the resources are, Potawatomi County, and, you know, we're working with Potawatomi County, but jurisdictionally, that's how things are still developed in business parks. And we also need to examine that business parks tend to have a 30-years before they fill up, and it's about year 15 is when it starts really getting going, about 18 to 22 is the prime time for a business park to fill up. That's very true in our business park here as well, so we need to think, look at our current boundaries, but also look a little further out and wonder, where is the ideal location for the next business park? And it'll probably take multiple business parks in order for us to satisfy the growth demand in this area, especially when you're looking at a three-decade window.
We've asked some of the guys in the city staff to look at a long view as well, where's the next place that housing or something else might go, because we've got the same concerns and constraints. Well, I'll add one question, I probably should know the answer to this, but you know, when you showed the slide of the city commitment and private capital commitment, what, can you kind of step through some of the major investments, I mean, I assume that's revenue spent?
Right, correct, yeah. We can go back to that.
These are investors, I assume, that are making decisions about where to put money inside the City of Manhattan or tangential.
Yeah, the slide isn't very, you know, wasn't very large, and this is done on a per-year basis, the Chamber took on and hired a consulting firm back in 2001 to raise private sector dollars, and the first campaign, and the money is raised over five-year increments, which is where you see the stair stepping here a little bit, and the first campaign over a five-year period ended up raising $2.1 million. When that concluded in the 2006 timeframe, you see another stair step there, and the campaign for the next five years ended up raising about $2.3 million. The next campaign jumped up considerably and ended up raising almost $2.8 million over a five-year period of time. And this final campaign, which was the next stair step that goes up that we're just into now, is, was $3.2 million. And so there's a couple of things I think you all should read into that, in that the private sector knows it needs a step to the plate, but it has seen some results. And we all recognize, I mean, I think all of us, the businessmen and women that are behind me, would tell you they have seen a flattening out, and I think you all have talked about it, your staff has talked to you about it, we, Fort Riley and K-State, which are still our two huge economic engines in the community, all have seen their own flattening out or declining in some all have seen their own flattening out or declining in some cases. I think that, I think your city manager, last, or a couple of commission meetings again, said, "I think that flattening out is temporary." But I think that we, as Chamber Economic Development people, as you as city commissioners, have to work towards having that next bump up. And if I go back and you look at all these stair steps, yes, Fort Riley was big, K-State was big, but the city invested a lot of money in downtown redevelopment, invested a lot of money in roads. Our community has invested a lot of money in our school district, in a bond issue that was passed about 10 years ago. Those kinds of investments have paid off. We've kind of hit a flattening. On the horizon, I'm personally very optimistic because I see the North Campus Corridor project, I see Aggieville and what they're looking at doing. I see a lot of different opportunities, NBAF finally coming online and the results of that. So I see some very positive things as I look into the future. And again, in the 1990s, Manhattan had some good growth. Then we lost the Big Red One to Germany, and we saw flattening out again. But K-State started to grow, and we started to pick up. And then the private sector came in and said, "We've got to really boost what's happened." And so we did create a lot of jobs, and we have flattened out since 2015. And the consultants, Market Street, very clearly painted that for us. And so we've been living on what happened between 2002 and 2015. And now we have to become, we've got to really become involved and committed to make things happen. You know, again, the city invested in the conference center. That has produced and is producing some results for us. And the commission will be looking later this year at whether we expand the conference center. I think that, as Commissioner Reddy pointed out, I think the sports is a great opportunity to bring some additional money and revenue to the community. But we have to work at it. And we've all got to work together, which we have in the past as a partnership. And so we have some challenges now, but I think we're facing it. And I think the next presentation takes us to that next level where we'll, where we will talk about a plan to help get us to that next level.
Each one of those five-year plans have a separate focus. In other words, is one maybe looked at downtown, the next one looked at something else?
They all, they all had a...
My guess is it doesn't go back that far, so...
They all had a focus, and it kept changing. The first plan's focus was on workforce development because we faced a very, not as crucial as where we are today, not only in Manhattan, but in Kansas and around the country. But it was very Manhattan-centric at that time, where people couldn't find employment. So there was a real emphasis on doing that. It was more focused on short-term. And then the next phase was on business recruitment. The third phase was on entrepreneurship, and how do we really get some of the innovation started? And this latest campaign, probably the two big things were talent, talent development and this vision, which again, was started out as the Greater Manhattan Project, is to really provide a vision for not, not just the Chamber and the business community, but for the entire community. If we're going to be a better community, have quality jobs and grow, then these are the things that you have to do.
Good. It's a great intro for the next guy.
Yeah. Before you try to build him up.
Before you do that, I'd just like to, I'm glad Lyle came back to the slide because it shows that city blue line is the, essentially, the fee you're paying the Chamber to help market and the community and grow economic development in the community. And, you know, credit to them for investing themselves to increase the services that they provide to their members and to the community. And that's really what that shows at the same time. The citizens have voted sales tax increases for economic development purposes, which made it easier, I think, for the businesses to also look into their pocket and invest in the community. So I think it's a really great partnership. One of the reasons we asked the Chamber and the Convention and Visitors Bureau to come kind of separately from all your other outside agencies is because it is more of a contractual business relationship for a contract for services than if you're giving somebody a grant for an organization. So they are an outreach of providing those types of Convention and Visitors Bureau services, tourism services, as well as economic development services to the community.
And if you'll notice in the little blue, it's hard to see, and if you're at home trying to look at it, but there was a little blip in 2006, and we did come to the commission, and we did ask that year for $40,000 addition to match the Chamber's $40,000 to be able to hire Janet and her types of military services because the community, with the Big Red One coming back, and because of the challenges with the military and trying to have, do a better job in our community to integrate the soldiers and families, there was that partnership. So that was the other request for an increase in commitment. But again, the private sector said we'll match that.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. Actually, I think there are several communities that are somewhat envious or they don't enjoy the same collaboration and partnership we have with their university or with Fort Riley or with their city, I think. So I'm glad we're doing all the workforce initiatives we are. The challenges are national. It's not just Manhattan, Kansas. Wherever you read, it's about how do you recruit the talent and everything like that. It's not as strong as it used to be as far as getting employees for businesses that want them. So we're competing with everybody. Everybody's trying to find that same talent, and they're going to go wherever they need to where they have a workforce. So I think we need to put a lot of effort into that. I like everything I heard tonight as far as the movement of Manhattan, and I think that's why people love to live in Manhattan, because of people like you and the partnerships we have. So a couple of questions for you. I know the city, you know, gives 188,000, maybe 183,000 before, but what does the county put into this or any other government agency other than the city?
Riley County just did their budget for next year, and they put in $60,000.
Okay. And the reason I ask this once, I think they had cut it off or decreased it or whatever it was, is has it been 60 for a while?
In my tenure here, Commissioner, it's gone from, I've got to think about this. I think it went one year to a low of 40,000. It's probably, if I had to average it, it was 50,000. We went to the commission a couple of years ago. The original intent of funding an effort with the military was as the city would put in 40,000, the county would put in 40,000, and the Chamber would put in 40,000. And we do a partnership. That's what our budget was planned for. And the county at that time decided not to do it for a variety of reasons. And for a number of years, they didn't. And we went back and asked if they would contribute 5,000 towards the effort and then 10,000 towards the effort. We actually asked a little bit more this year, but with their budget issues, they said we'll keep you at 60. So we just got the official note.
At 60 for the entire Chamber or for the Fort Riley? What's the Fort Riley component? Because we give about 40 for...
So there's, so it's about 50 for economic development, 10 that would be committed for Fort Riley.
Okay. And so that...
Those are the, to finish your answering your question, those are the only public entities that give us money. Potawatomi County Economic Development Corporation, two things, which is funded by Potawatomi, it's funded by, again, a private-public partnership. But the county gives considerable dollars to the Potawatomi County, Potawatomi County gives considerable dollars to the Potawatomi County Economic Development Corporation. They have contributed, as Trent showed you on the slide up there, to the Greater Manhattan Economic Partnership. They're a significant financial partner to that, and they also contributed to the Greater Manhattan Project when we were doing the original study and to help fund Market Street, just as you all did.
Right, I remember that. So I hear you, when you present to the county, I was wondering what their take is and some of the feedback that they're getting as far as the bigger vision for the Greater Manhattan Project or R2, as we've been discussing. Let me see what was they're going to ask. Quality of schools and life. One of the things the Chamber did, along with, I think because your partnership with Medall, being part of the Manhattan Emporia-Tapica-Lawrence Group, we're starting to discuss the dark store theory and legislation. And your, the Manhattan Chamber has often taken a different stance than the Kansas Chamber, thinking more about our local issues. So I hope we continue that conversation because legislation is very important as we recruit businesses, that we also are impacting our local taxpayers, not overburdening them. The reason we want businesses is because we also want them to contribute in property taxes, not just get a huge break from it. So I'm glad you're going to be part of the task force and continue those conversations, but I also would appreciate it if the Chamber at some point took a stance and was proactive in this issue.
And we are considering that. And we also, we've raised the issue with our other partners in Tapica and Lawrence and Emporia. And I think just as we're doing, they're trying to study the issue to make sure they understand all angles. I don't know where the, Lisa's right here, she's chair of our Business Advocacy Committee, and we have started those discussions. And I think at some point, once we have enough information on the sides, we will be, before the end of the year, taking a position on that. We're very concerned about it. And again, I want to make everyone clear is that the Manhattan Chamber is its own independent organization. Currently, we're not a member of the Kansas Chamber. The Kansas Chamber has a different position on this. That's their position. But we are very sensitive to what our local market and issues. And one of the things we're trying, Trent and I were just talking about this today, is we're trying to grow the sales tax revenue, the transient guest tax revenue, but we're also trying to grow the property tax, not in increase in property tax, but if you, those buildings that are now under construction out at your business park are going to pay property taxes. And they weren't there a year ago. And so they're going to eventually get added on, and if we can get that park full, that'll be a significant economic engine paying property taxes out at that location.
Right. And that's exactly what I'm talking about. Because if businesses like that start doing the dark store theory, then we don't want to, we're anticipating full, it becomes half. So it's also from the business angle, because you are economic development, but also representing a lot of businesses. So that was one of the things I wanted to make sure we were on top of instead of forgetting about it. I was researching a bunch of stuff last night, and I came upon Judy Randall's travel stuff, some, not on my own stuff, but I was thinking about CVB and Chamber, and how many are worked together and how many are separated in other communities. So one of the things on the Randall, there was some comment about from her agency where she was indicating it was best that CVB work on their own and promote events and marketing and tourism, and Chamber work on, for example, the three-legged stool as it pertains to businesses. What's your take on that? Because we, when we get the CVB transient guest tax money, in our contract, we give it to the Chamber. And the Chamber takes care of that on behalf of CVB.
And that, and there are many different models across America. We're actually unique, and I would tell you that, that we belong to the Association of Chamber of Commerce Executives, which is our, actually, international organization. And they've actually called me and said, "Lyle, the partnership, there's a lot of chambers that will have Chamber Economic Development. There are chambers that have Chamber CVB but no economic development. We're very unique because we have economic development, we have military, we have the Convention and Visitors Bureau, and the traditional Chamber, all as one." And I think that comes from the kinds of partnerships that we're being recognized for with the town gown relationship. And I think that partnerships is what has made Manhattan very successful. And I think that, just so the people at home know and remind the commission is, is that the money that comes to the CVB through the transient guest tax is spent with the CVB. So if I go to a Chamber conference in wherever, the CVB does not pay for me to go there. If Karen goes to a CVB conference, it pays for her and her staff to go there. And the same thing with the economic development dollars you give us, and the private sector economic development, those economic development dollars stay in the economic development. They don't fund the CVB, and the CVB doesn't fund the economic development. And in the traditional Chamber membership, they don't, they're all separate budgets, and the board of directors looks at those budgets, approves those budgets, and we don't cross over. The only thing where we share is like for our receptionists in the front, each entity pays into that to pay for a couple of shared entities, but the money stays separate.
And that's what I wanted to be clear about, because each of you have a different mission and a different pot of money, different budgets. And I think we are unique, that it's all under one building, but having the infrastructure is not my concern as far as thinking about, would CVB be best if they just had their own instead of contracting it this way? But I think it's worked well. I don't see any friction. I think all of you work well together. But I just want to make sure, when we look at CVB money and $1.2 million, there's always that question, how is it being spent and why is it under the Chamber contract and all of that? So I just wanted to clarify those. Thank you.
I think we have a long history here of these partnerships, and I think they've worked well with K-State and Fort Riley and the Chamber. And we all have different roles, and so working together at critical times is what's important. So are there other Commissioner comments?
I'd like to finish.
Please.
We're saving the best for last.
Okay.
Matt Crocker is our chair of the board of the Chamber. I think most of you know him, and he's going to do an update on the Region Reimagine.
I'm going to find his presentation.
It was there.
Well, it got closed earlier by accident, so.
Thank you, Lyle. And thank you, Commissioners and Mayor, for your time tonight. I'd also like to start off by, excuse me, by thanking you for both, all being great partners at the beginning of this project. We spoke about the funding. That was obviously the first step to get this going. Also, the leadership, Mayor, for providing your leadership as a tri-chair of the project. City manager participating in the steering committee. We also have Commissioner Dotson now on the implementation committee. So, and I believe there are several others that have been involved in some of the work groups that we're starting to establish. So thank you for your leadership and your partnership. So Lyle already mentioned that the project really was born out of and emerged as a key theme as we went out to start our last phase of our private funding campaign. And the goal that we presented, there was a question about what do the funds that we get privately come from? We provide those investors specific goals that we want to achieve with their funds. And the goal that was related to the Greater Manhattan Project, at the time was not named the Greater Manhattan Project, but this initiative was to obtain and implement a community-based economic development plan to guide the Manhattan area in maximizing the impact of future economic growth opportunities. And I'd say the key thing we've achieved so far is we have obtained this, but we have yet to implement it. So we still have some work to do from our standpoint as it relates to our investors. And along with those investors, you heard that we had over 140 investors in our Power Potential Campaign, along with the City of Manhattan, Riley County, and Potawatomi County Development Corporation. And then again, I'd like to thank the leadership we had as it relates to the tri-chairs, and Mayor Morris, Vern Hendricks from the Greater Manhattan Community Foundation, Dennis Mullen, chairman of SPS Companies, Inc. And then on the steering committee, we had more than 60 regional leaders involved in this process. And so we got tremendous input. So tonight, what I'm going to do is I would like to give you a little background of the project, give you some updates on some things that we've done, and then speak about some of the findings and some of the next steps we have. So the process itself, as I mentioned, was ultimately named the Greater Manhattan Project. And we went through a process of interviewing multiple groups that could come in and do this consultancy. Ultimately, the Chamber decided to select Market Street as the party to work with. They had a great reputation and had worked with several of the communities that we were also following. And a couple of big reasons why we were interested in their model was it was very research-based, so very fact-based. We felt like that was an important aspect of this. And they also took an approach of getting very broad input. So through the process, there were over a dozen one-on-one interviews with key public and private leaders. For example, President Myers was interviewed to get his input on what the future of this community should look like. We also held 10 focus groups, and those focus groups ranged from 10 to 20 individuals. For example, one... For example, one focus group was specifically associated with Fort Riley, more rural, I'm sorry, more rural Riley County, as well as Fort Riley. And then the online survey that we were able to garner more than 2,300 responses. And I'll tell you that Market Street was very impressed with the size of our community, the amount of responses we got on our community survey. So the four steps that this whole process went through were the community assessment, a target sector analysis and marketing review. Step three was the community and economic development strategy. And then finally, step four was the implementation plan. And as you see here on the right, as I already mentioned, there was tremendous public input provided in that. So what did we discover in the process? You know, I'd have to be honest and say some of these things weren't too surprising, but some were pretty eye-opening. One of the first things we discovered is that, or they recognized that Manhattan is a very dynamic region, and that we had a very strong history of coming together to support key institutions and projects. You think of Embath and how the city and the community rallied around that, Fort Riley, I mean, things at the university, we had example after example. Another item that was discovered was, you know, our key anchor employers were able to stabilize our region during the Great Recession. But it certainly put us at risk of over-reliance on government funding. So as we know, when we went through the downturn in '08 and '09, we didn't, weren't as impacted as greatly as some other communities, fortunately. They also recognized that we had a great opportunity with technology commercialization, specifically mentioned Embath as an opportunity to leverage in the future. And that, you know, trying to accommodate the growth of our area was going to require a lot of collaborative solutions. So again, again, the themes of cooperation and collaboration and partnership. So if things were so great and it sounded so great, why do we need to do this? Well, as you heard earlier from John, although the Manhattan region ranks very near the top as it relates to our performance and growth, as into the state of Kansas, when you look at it from a national perspective, as you can see from this slide, it tells a very different story. And as the peer analysis was developed, what one thing was recognized through this is the Manhattan region is very unique. Market Street could not find any other region of our size that was so heavily impacted by a university and a military base. So with that, there were some questions about, well, are these peer groups really the proper peer groups? Well, given the fact that we've already visited five of these nine cities, from regional leaders going both through Chamber-led inter-region trips, and as was mentioned earlier tonight, some additional side trips, I'd say that the region as a whole considers these to be our peers. And so when you look at these peers in the top right, I want to point out that so the color coding here in the closer to the right side of the graph, that number represents our rank in that category versus those peer cities. And when you average Manhattan's rank against those peer cities, excuse me, we rank 7.2 out of 10. Clearly, this illustrated that there's a lot of work to be done if we aspire to be as successful as some of these peer cities. Just to point out a few that we're very far behind on, and I also had this, an opportunity to mention this at our annual Chamber Dinner, which was surprising. We actually are 10th as it relates to net domestic migration and total population change over a five-year period. What that means is people are not coming here, they're leaving. We also ranked 10th as it relates to the five-year population change. We talked about the population or the employment change over the long period of time has been good. But when you look at it over five years, and as you can see, we ranked 10th on some others. So I think the message here is there clearly is a need to do something. So some key actions that have been taken out of this as the Chamber led. One is the Chamber was asked to not only be involved in helping sponsor the project, but ultimately to take the responsibility being the implementation coordinating entity. And we have, our board voted very early this year to do that. We also took the initiative to recognize we wanted to get going and move on this. We asked John Pagan to fill the role of the Implementation Director on an interim basis so that we could get things moving. And also agreed or committed to search for a full-time implementation director. And we're currently in the process of recruiting for that position. As I mentioned, an Implementation Committee was established. One of the things that we thought was important for this community is rather than having a very large group of 60 folks have to try to get together once a month to get things moving, we felt like we needed a little bit more nimble group. And so we created an Implementation Committee, which I'll share with you a little bit later. And then the other item that was done or action was taken is the Steering Committee and Implementation Committee evaluated the name of the initiative. So as it relates to the name, I wanted to share a few things. And this is the first time this has been shown publicly. I'd like to thank 502 for their efforts with this. We asked them, contracted with them to help us create a new brand image. And so what this first slide depicts are the three, as you can see, the three regions that we're representing, currently representing. And they liked the idea of the proximity and shape and kind of wanted, this is where the ideas and generations started to take off. The second slide, obviously, is of crop rows. And 502 felt that while the region has a strong Flin Hills image, and we had a few, some feedback from some others in this process, in a movement of hills, it does very well, but we wanted to stay away from that because it's used so much. So we wanted to make sure this initiative had a very specific identity. And we're worried that if we used a Flin Hills theme, that it would get caught up in some others that are using that. So they moved towards the idea of using row crops, which are obviously very common in the area. And as you can see from these pictures, we also started to move and drift towards a, what we're characterizing as a 10,000-foot level, to recognize that we're talking about a very high level and broad region as this, as it relates to this. Then the artistic people got involved, this was not me by any means, by the way, so. And started to sketch a logo. And they created Reimagined as a scripted font to showcase creativity, innovation and movement. And the region typeface is represented as a bold and strong in how we feel about the area we live in, so. So as all these pieces came together, this ultimately became the new image that we were going to have for this initiative, Region Reimagine, our blueprint for prosperity. So now you'll see a change in the theme of the slides here, so. So from here forward, we will be characterizing this as Region Reimagine. And the Greater Manhattan Project will simply represent the process we went through to achieve the plan. The Implementation Committee members are here, we had over 12 members. Lyle also served as a member or an advisor to this committee. But as you can see, the importance of this committee, we felt, was not so much making sure we got broad input, because those are other functions, but having people that were able to help us put together the actual plan to move this forward. At this point in time, we already had a lot of ideas, but we needed to gather those so that we could have a process to move forward. You see, we have a couple of individuals, especially from a regional perspective, with Darren Solden joining the group from the Wamigo Chamber. And we tried to also capture, again, large, broad, with Kansas State, Flin Hills, NPO and some others. The broader group was also, the Steering Committee was also expanded. As we went, continue to go through this process, we recognized we were missing a few key constituents. So just to point out a few that we've added, specifically added. Rich Jankovic, who is currently the Chair of the Junction City Chamber Board, was asked to join and join the Steering Committee. We also, again, Darren Solden from Wamigo was asked to join. And then at the bottom, you see here, we also asked Perry Wiggins, the, of the Governor's Military Council to join, recognizing that Fort Riley was going to be an important advocate for us here as well.
Hey, Matt.
Yeah.
I don't want to stop you, you have a good flow. But as far as the Implementation Committee, have you thought about having a K-State student? I know Jeff Morris works at K-State. But if we're, if the, the work that Market Street did says K-State is a huge component, and we're looking at the millennials and the Generation X or Z, or whatever they are now, shouldn't we have some people in their 20s? I don't know, I don't know their ages that are in there, so maybe we do.
I won't ask Blade to disclose how old he is, but we have a few younger folks on here. Our intent with this, again, was to make sure that we had people that had some experience of getting things done and putting a plan in place. As it relates to broader, broadening it, that's where the workgroups, which I'll get to in a second. But absolutely, we need to reach out to people at K-State. I will say that one of the things that we continue to remind ourselves is it's very easy, as you're looking for people to be involved, to think about people that you already have a relationship with. And one of the things that we as a Chamber have been very adamant about is that we need to get younger people and people who haven't been as engaged in Chamber activities involved, because again, this is going to be a community plan. But yeah, Kansas State is definitely an area that we have had some discussions on the different workgroups of getting people involved. So now that we've gotten through that, one of the things that I want to point out as we get started through this, and I have to remind myself regularly, is Market Street provided us a five-year plan. So there's a lot of things that we have been presented with needing to get done. And obviously, with the focus that we've had in this community of trying to roll up our sleeves and get things done, it's natural to try to tackle it all at once. But we have to consistently remind ourselves that this is a five-year plan. And so how do we change those results that I showed you as it relates to our peers? What we've, the Steering Committee through Market Street's work identified were three overarching goals. Those goals being targeted economic diversification, talent, sustainability, and entrepreneurial dynamism. And then supported by three cross-cutting initiatives, which are growth management, advocacy and collaborative governance. So I'm going to spend a minute, I'm not going to go into all these details, but just wanted to point out a few things and give a little bit more details about what these goals really mean. So targeted economic diversification, this refers back to my comment or the findings that we did really well through the Great Recession because of our support from public sector. But what, what Market Street found out, and what we found out through this, is that we depend way too heavily on public sector employment, and in particular unpredictable troop movements and student enrollment fluctuations. And I think we've all obviously experienced that over things. And so one of the things that we need to do is we need to expand the region's industrial mix, which you've heard already some tonight. And that will require us to focus on three principal ways to get jobs. Existing business growth, retention and expansion, entrepreneurship, which you've also heard a lot about tonight, and targeted prospect development and attraction. And so, and obviously, being in business, one of the things that we always want to find out is what kind of a return am I, how am I going to measure my return? And you guys have already talked about that tonight. So some of the potential measures that we've identified as it relates to making improvement on targeted economic diversification, national media mentions is one. Total direct flights from MHK, I mean, that obviously is an indication of economic activity. You heard earlier, total acreage of shovel-ready sites. That's something that's important, that Market Street obviously mentioned is important. And one thing that really stood out to me that was a little different that I hadn't thought of, but I know our folks in the Economic Development Group have, is the percentage of locations with gigabit internet. And I know that we have some folks currently working on expanding that, so. The second goal was talent sustainability. I think everybody understands for the most part what that is. But as I mentioned earlier, one of the challenges we have is with no domestic migration, again, people not moving here, more people moving away, is we need to figure out ways where we can retain those that are spending some time here, whether it be graduates from Kansas State University, MATEC, transitioning soldiers, and build general awareness and interest in the area, and try to make this and create a talent destination. Again, just to highlight a few of the metrics that are proposed to use to measure our success with this, the STEM enrollment, this would be obviously as it relates to developing the proper talent we need, percent of grads remaining here. And then the other thing that I think was interesting is the percent of residents spending 30% plus on housing. I mean, obviously, part of the talent aspect is making sure that we have housing that's appropriate for the workforce needs we have. And then finally, on the entrepreneurial side, you know, we want to continue to cultivate and expand our economic, I'm sorry, entrepreneurial ecosystem. Some measurements here are just the general employment that we have in our innovation districts. We've talked about the North Campus Corridor, and Aggieville is becoming innovation districts. And then Trent mentioned earlier, another important aspect is how many total square feet of lab space we have available in the community. So those goals are great, but obviously, there's a lot of work that has to be done behind them to move forward and try to achieve these. And so those goals are intended to be achieved through nine strategic priorities that were identified through the work of the Steering Committee. And those nine strategic priorities are to build external awareness of the region, approve the attraction of talent to the region, optimize our innovation districts, continue to expand and grow existing regional businesses, provide a quality of place environment. This is something that was, I think, talked about quite a bit. You know, when you talk about economic development, you often talk about the physical assets that the businesses need. But equally as important is creating a quality of place environment that people want to come to. The sixth was to provide sufficient supply of economic growth supportive infrastructure. Part of this has actually was part of the gigabit infrastructure. Construct high-quality and appropriate housing. Again, big housing obviously has a big impact on regional labor force. Retain the number of graduates. And then also ensure that we are doing all we can to make the soldiers that are transitioning from the military permanent residents in our area. So again, nothing in there, there were a few in there that were maybe a little bit surprising, but I think after we talk about everything as collaboratively, nothing really stood out as a shock. And so then to your question, Commissioner Ready, is, you know, how are we going to get this done? Well, what Market Street recommended is that we create what they characterized as workgroups to actually fulfill the work and identify the next steps in the process. And these workgroups would be led by co-chairs and would be populated by between 15 and 25 individuals, depending on the workgroup. And this is where we need to go out, we're beginning this process to go out and cast a very broad net to make sure that we are getting a full representation of the community in this process. These workgroups cannot do the work themselves. As you see here to the right, I've illustrated that, you know, there's going to be a lot of work through various regional partners. Several subcommittees could be created, and some may already be in the process. The purpose is to try to make sure that we are getting this work, these workgroups are getting an understanding of what's going on out in the community that aligns with our strategic objectives and priorities and goals, and making sure that we're keeping those in the forefront and helping facilitate that and work forward. So that's the process. And then, so just to share a little bit more, you already heard John mentioned several of the things that we're doing, the progress we've made to date. One specific project that's in progress that's tied to a strategy is Strategy 2.6 that was provided was to improve the attraction of talent to the Manhattan area and specifically expand, retire to the Flin Hills, and a new targeted talent recruitment program with different interesting brands. Well, you've seen tonight, and here's another picture, that we've already taken that upon ourselves. So it's not like the community's sitting still and not working on these, we continue to move forward. The other strategy that was specifically mentioned was to continue to build awareness of the Greater Manhattan's assets. And obviously, you've heard about that through the Greater Manhattan Economic Partnership. So one of the things I wanted to make sure that was important to understand about this is, although the Chamber, through its fundraising, its private fundraising efforts, really took the lead on this, this is not the Manhattan Chamber's or the business community's plan. It's a community strategy that's going to require participation and financial contributions from across the region to be successful. The other aspect I wanted to mention is this is not meant to be a duplication of existing efforts, but rather a means to coordinate those efforts towards common goals so that we are all aligned and focusing on. So one of the reasons I think that it's important for us to have common goals and a clear path is not only to know what items fit within that plan or path, but it's equally important to know what things don't align and fit with that path. As you obviously have been faced with over the last year and this coming weeks, you know, we, there is no limit to the number of things and options we have to do and spend money on. But I think what's very important is that we have an understanding of what things we need to say no to so that we're still staying focused and keeping the resources for those things that are specific to our goals and objectives. So the next steps, number one will be we want to hire an Implementation Director. And hopefully, the next time we get an update, it'll be someone besides myself. I'm happy to be here, but we'll be, if we're successful, we'll have someone else here presenting upon this, who will also be out continuing to spread the word and reach out in the community. Until that time, as business leaders, we'll continue to go out and inform and educate people about this process. We also need to develop a more robust budget for this process. We were provided a straw budget from Market Street through this process. Part of that budget, as we talked earlier, of the need to retain or get more talent in the areas, their recommendation is that the Chamber figure out a way to get resources to go hire a Vice President of Talent and a Talent Manager. So those would be two new roles within the Chamber to help with these things. And then ultimately, once we get our budget, we need to go out and begin raising funds from both private and public parties, so. So the ultimate goal that was adopted by the Steering Committee of the, at the time, Greater Manhattan Project, but now Region Reimagine, will be the creation of good jobs that will build local wealth, create opportunities for all residents, reduce poverty and income inequality, improve quality of life, and provide economic stability for generations to come. I think it'd be fair to say that if we're able to achieve this objective, that those who live here in Manhattan 20, 30, 40 years from now will consider us to be very good ancestors of this community. So I thank you for your time and attention, and I'm, and once again, your support and leadership. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. leadership, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I have a couple of questions. You know, the city, we adopted as one of our goals for city commission priorities and goals when we did our goal-setting session to support R2 now, GMAP then, of Greater Manhattan, whatever it was. So we're on board for the implementation of it and also by hiring somebody to implement it. I know Topeka's already has it up and going. Definitely, we think, need to think differently and have somebody set to do this work so everybody else has a day job and you need somebody whose total focus is this. And I understand that, and I, at least you have my support in that initiative. The, a few questions for you would be, when will this, you said the, you're in the process of a hiring one. When do you see someone being hired for this? What is the timeline?
Yeah, well, I mean, we're, we're in the process, we've closed out the recruitment or opening of the positions. So we're in the process of filing, filtering through the applicants. And so over the coming weeks, we'll narrow that down and try to set up some interviews. So, I mean, my hope from a scheduling perspective is we can come to a conclusion in the next sixty days with somebody, but recognizing everybody's busy and schedules, but very soon, very soon.
And the other one is anytime you hire somebody, you have the goals and you have the potential measures, as you said. One of the things we do in education is have SMART goals. So where's something that's measurable, something that's attainable, not idealistic, but something you can have numbers attached to it. So are you doing the groundwork now and what the baseline is right now so you can monitor that growth in the next three years and five years? Where are you getting your baseline information for some of those things?
Yeah, so the, as I mentioned early on, one of the benefits of us going with Market Street was we felt like they did a very good process of using, you know, very fact-based information. And so currently, we have their report that they presented to us at the beginning of the year. So one of the items that we need to do and is on our to-do list is to make sure that we're continuing to stay on top of those metrics. Ultimately, what we need to have happen is each work group in this different areas needs to identify what are some of the key metrics that are important for the things that they're working on and have that be a ground-up kind of pull-up, but ultimately tying to achievement of those goals. So we currently have the information from Market Street with some of this data. It isn't something you can just pull every week. Obviously, you have annual data. So that would be a portion of the phase that we'll need to be doing at the end of this year, first part of next year, to make sure we're measuring success.
The coordinator would be part of this.
Yes.
And one of the things we have in education and probably in other organizations is when a student is in a classroom, they're either learn because of you or in spite of you. And we hope they learn in this case or grow in this case because of the investment we're putting in. Because growth is gonna happen because, but we want it to be successful growth. We want it to be where businesses want to be here. We want it to be where we are doing everything and that we're using all of our resources to make this the ideal place for K-State students to have a job here. Oftentimes, you hear K-State students, well, I would stay if I had a job. That's what we want. So even though we, our population may increase, it's going to increase, I hope the prosperity concept of it is because of this five-year plan. And that's what I want it to be, a very vigorous process where everybody's involved. And I think having those work groups which have fifteen to twenty members in it is part of that ownership that goes into our community. So I appreciate the work that's being done, but I also look forward to what those measurable goals are gonna be as we invest, continue to invest, and then figure out what we don't need to do if it's not working. If a certain part of it is not working, not the whole thing, but yeah.
I'm curious about the staff support that your implementation director will need, and will that come from the chamber? I mean, no one person probably can do all that.
No, no, so.
We expect, because we expect a lot.
Yeah, so I guess what ideal looks like, and whether this is through chamber staff or, we feel it's important, as, you know, we've been pointed out, everybody's busy and has day jobs. And most of these work groups are gonna be made up of volunteers. And so what's very important is for us to have enough staff at each of these work group meetings so that we have someone that can keep track of what was discussed and also help move forward. And so, for example, I think Topeka, so their implementation director attends each one of the work group meetings, or at least as many as she can, but they also have an additional staff person that's appropriate for each of the work groups that participates as well. So a talent, so for example, if it's something related to talent, the vice president of talent position that I mentioned would also participate in that. You know, we have people from the MPO that are involved, and so clearly, if you're dealing with infrastructure, you know, you'd have those sorts of staff people. So I think it's gonna vary, but absolutely, we're gonna need more resources to help herd the cats to some extent, again, and try to keep people moving forward and marching to the same drum, so. But we've talked about maybe some city staff being, participating in some of the work groups just to make sure that we're informed and aware. So it's, it's gonna vary.
I think my question was after the director, this new director level, project director is hired for the R2 project, what additional staff or staffing do you expect to see?
Needs for this? Oh, well, as I mentioned, the vice president of talent was one that was recommended, a talent manager.
Are you gonna start off with three then, three full-time people, or?
We haven't gotten through that process yet. The only thing we've identified is that we have John already working full-time and we've asked him to do more. And so we need to, it's critical for us to get that person hired as the implementation director. Beyond that, we haven't made any, actually don't even have any finalized job descriptions to be able to go post. So that'll be a process that we're gonna need to be working through once we get the implementation director hired.
I think it would be helpful. No, that's all right. I was gonna say, as you move along, I think it would be helpful for us to understand that person's job description in all of the economic development activity that we have here in the community and the different organizations. It would be good for us to know that person's role.
Now, just to thank you personally and also Wayne, we've got some very talented people working on these committees and setting all this up and kind of using the Market Street as a springboard. When you look at the organization and what Market Street put together, you look in the back end of that, you see that each one of those work groups, we reformed a little bit, but each one of those work groups has multiple subtasks that are, doesn't mean you have to be followed rigorously, but it does mean they're worthy of consideration. And we've let the work groups modify as they go along. So one of the initial things they have to do is kind of identify where they are and then what their mission is. And that helps in kind of defining performance. And one of the things that Matt mentioned, I think that's critical here is coordination. You know, when they identify the baseline, they look out and see the kinds of organizations or individuals that are already doing things. You know, and there's no sense in just starting off and redoing it. You've got to bring those people in to help, so. The other one that sometimes gets overlooked is, and the mayor mentioned this, is the, when you look across the common things that have to happen for each one of those work groups, it might be scheduling, it might be preparing correspondence and those kind of things. Those are critical to making sure that we don't overburden our volunteers, so that'll be something that we have to do. And maybe lastly, in the way of advocacy, when you look at the state of Kansas, Manhattan is really an anomaly and has been for a couple of years. So we have to make sure that talent continues to flow to Manhattan even though the state of Kansas is not being successful in doing that same thing. So there's a lot of work to be done with the Department of Congress and others, even the Chamber of Commerce, if we can get them on board to make sure that not only Manhattan, but the other cities are successful. So appreciate what you're doing, Matt.
Thank you, thank you. I guess just to reiterate a comment or reinforce a comment you made, for example, one of the work groups is community infrastructure. And so early on, we included Stephanie Peterson in the conversation and the whole point, her point was, I need to be involved in that because otherwise, I'm gonna have people off going one direction and we're going off this direction as an MPO. And so we don't want that, that's inefficient and an ineffective use of people's time and resources, so.
Well, that's a great segue to my comment, because I was about to just say that I'm on the community infrastructure group. And so I will just echo the other commissioners' comments, this is something I'm excited about. We actually had our very first meeting today at four o'clock. And the thing that I guess I would want to communicate about is, I'm really excited about this process because I think it's gonna, in a lot of ways, force us to collaborate on a level that really hasn't happened before. And through that collaboration, even just from one meeting, there's opportunities and cost savings and just a CIP that we had requested this year. And that's exciting, that's something that we found out at our very first meeting at four o'clock today. So I am really excited to see how this kind of process works itself out over the next year and the years beyond that. But yeah, this is something I'm very much supportive of and I look forward to continuing working with all of you.
Thank you, thank you for your participation.
Matt, thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Thank you, again, thank you for your leadership and thank you for your support with this and...
It's been a wonderful process to be a part of as the community comes together and because it really matters. And I think all of us have been involved and committed and happy to be a part of it. And I know you work with the city, with the city manager's office very closely, so.
Very much, great partnership. Thank you.
Thank you all. It's been suggested that we might take a break until eight o'clock, so that's about eight minutes. See you in a bit. See you in a bit. We're going to reconvene now and the next presentation will be by Hillary Badger, the Assistant Director for Finance for the city. She's carrying a heavy load tonight. Bernie isn't here.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Fortunately Bernie is not here tonight, so you just have myself and staff included. And with that, I haven't done as good of a job as I normally do in prior years as thanking my own staff that work on this budget. We start working on the budget the whole fiscal year in advance. We start November and December. And as we're publishing the last one and it's coming off the press, we're starting the new one. We've had a great team and our team has changed this year. We have Daniella Whitman, who's our Budget Operations Officer, and Amy Albert, who's a Senior Accountant with the city. Both have just been great as part of our budget team. This year, we're operating for the last month down a person. So that was Courtney Kramer, who was our Senior Financial Analyst. And she had some pretty big tasks that we're filling in for. She did special assessments, the economic development report. So our team is currently picking up all that work. So I thank them for their hard work as well as the rest of finance. There have not been substantial changes since the last time we were before you. The city budget still stands at 154 million for the 2019 budget. And that's a $6.3 million increase from 2018 with the majority of the change being in special revenue funds from the trails and recreation and facilities sales tax as well as the special street maintenance sales tax from the .2. Property taxes still stand at a $2 million increase from 2018 to 2019 with the largest ask being in the general fund. And that was, that is due to revenue shortfall that we've presented in prior budget work This is a quick overview of where we started this season. So clear back in April, the first time we were in front of the city manager's office, we had over $32 million in ask of property taxes out of the city's budget. And before you this evening, just over $29 million. So we've trimmed over $3 million off of that initial ask and with a total mill levy increase of 2.288 over the 2018 budget. Historically, our mill levy, except for the exception of 2016, which you can see here highlighted, a substantial amount of capital, the capital improvement program within the general fund, has been very minimal in terms of the entire city. This is, this includes the outside city services that we always talk about, which is RCPD and library as well as inside the city. So as you can see, in 2014, we went down a little bit to last year where we were just at .3 mill levy increase over 2017. For 2019, the, as I stated earlier, the biggest portion of property tax increase is in the general fund. It's 1.752 mils of the 2.288 ask. And of that, 1.171 is in personnel services. As we've discussed in the past, the general fund is 70% personnel. That's the biggest, it's the operating fund of the city and that's what the majority of it supports, our people salaries as well as operations for city facilities. The next biggest ask being from contractual services, commodities, and then other. The general fund CIP over the years has been always a main topic during budget work sessions. It tends to be something that we focus on very heavily. We give you a lot of data as well as all the projects and equipments that are asked for. As you can see, over the last five years, the CIP has varied greatly from just over 400,000 in 2014 to 375 is the ask for 20, or is the ask for 2019. So we remain pretty competitive and stable with the 2018, which was at 344,000. This is a breakdown, the blue is project, or equipment, I'm sorry, for the past years as well as a year into the future. So I really want to take your eye to that 2020 standpoint because that's where, as this 375 that's currently being asked in the general fund, as you begin to consider it and possibly cut it, it possibly can either just move to that 2020 year and start, it just moves the impact, or you end up finding another source if you do not wish to have it be general fund impact. So in 2019, again, 375, 306 of that is equipment. 68,000 is projects. So as you can see, as well in past years, our heavy reliance for that funding to be for equipment, not really projects in the general fund. Tonight, one of the things we wanted to bring before you for your consideration are the cash reserves within the general fund. They've been a topic this year mainly because of what we're experiencing right now with revenue shortfall, as well as how we make up our next year's beginning fund balance. So in past years, we have always budgeted $2 million as a beginning balance. That's currently what's in your 2019 budget. You're stating, we plan on starting January with $2 million. Right now, we're going through what we're, what we're having to do budget with hiring freezes and travel freezes because that revenue this year is not coming in like we budgeted this time last year. So in order to make up and hit that $2 million mark in January, it has to be a savings within the general fund. So in the past, we haven't changed cash reserves. They've always been $750,000. So that's what we're saying is kind of our emergency fund. If something were to happen extraordinarily, we need cash. But we budget 2 million. So that 1.25 is always made up from either excess revenue or savings within the general fund. And each year, that's why month to month, we look at, all the data that we look at is to make sure where are we tracking? And years like this year, when it is a sharp revenue decline, that's where we really feel it because now not only the 1.25 needs to be saved, but any revenue shortfall. And that puts pressure back on operations. So over the last five years, this is what has made up our balance each year. As you can see, in 2014, 2015, 2016, it's, we've had some excess revenue there to count on. You really start to see this picture in 2018 with what we're experiencing. And we don't have any data right now to indicate that this is a changing thing from what we're seeing for this first six months. So even at the end of last year, we operationally saved quite a bit within the general fund. So you start to ask, why didn't we not hit our $2 million beginning fund balance this year? It's because revenues have sharply declined within the general fund and our reliance on that to make up that balance has been so great that we're really feeling that operationally this year and trying to adjust to that. So part of our solution to this and strategy is to take a resolution that was adopted by the City Commission in 2004. And it's called the Utility Reserve Loan Program. And that allows short-term borrowing from the utility funds. A repayment schedule has to be designated and an interest percentage needs to be calculated against that loan. And you all must approve it. For 2019, we're asking that we borrow just over a million from water and 410,000 from stormwater and increase our general fund cash reserves to 2.25 million. When we look at what nationally, our financial, basically our association that we're a part of, the Government Finance Officers Association, they recommend two months' worth of expenditures of your budget. If we take our budget and calculate out two months of expenditures, that's 4.8 million. So we're still really far under what they say the national recommendation should be. So we think that this is getting us somewhere. It's not getting us all the way there, but it's a big step in the right direction. A repayment schedule over three years would mean $510,000 to be repaid by the general fund to water and stormwater. And we've calculated right now 2% interest on the loan balance. Two weeks ago, we sold investments and got a little bit over 2% on a 365-day investment. So this, I think, is competitive not only to the market of what these funds would get if we went out to the open market and invested them. So we're remaining competitive with that. If any of you have questions about this, I'd be happy to answer them before I move on.
Hillary, I have a question about that. So I understand the concept and I understand the interest of it. So if we were to go in this direction, we're committing to put it back in there with interest. Would we come up with a timeline on how we're going to put it back? Are we going to do it in increments? How does that look?
So this would start in 2020. So we'd be loaning it in 2019 and have until the end of 2020 to make up our first $510,000 payment. So it gives us between that time of 2019's budget and the end of 2020 to come up with that repayment, whether it be from revenue, excess revenue, or a savings.
So we have to do it this way?
You could choose a repayment schedule. We've just given you three years. It could be five years. It could be whatever you really desire. Just a repayment schedule has to be determined with an interest rate.
A repayment schedule has to be determined at the time we decided, if we decide to go this route?
Yes.
So if we decide to go this route, what if in 2020, we experience the same thing that we did in 2019 and we don't have $510,000 to pay back to that fund? What happens?
I think at that point, it becomes a new decision that the commission adopts per whether it's not a, you know, if it's a delayed payment...
So we can essentially vote to null our whole decision?
I believe the resolution would give you that flexibility to readjust.
Also, I know this is kind of a broad question, but how does, how does this impact us in terms of the property tax lid?
It does not.
Okay.
It does not have an impact on property taxes.
I just want to be cautious with this. Mainly, I feel somewhat in a bad spot when I see the state doing a decay dot. I don't want to be in that spot where we're doing it to our own agencies and not being able to put it back because I just, so this is something that's like a really, really last resort for me. I'm glad that, you know, at that time Brad Everett drafted, or the city drafted it with him and Brad had signed on. But I have the same concern. I would hate to, even though we're in a decline and flat right now, I don't see it going up in two or three years. It's going to be slow progression before we make it up for even the CIP and all of this other stuff that we're, kind of put it on this backlog of everything. So this is good to have as an option, but there needs to be a lot more discussion, I think, before we go this route.
Right now, to give you a quick viewpoint, in our current state, even if revenue was stable, we're still going to ask departments to save 1.25. So this is substantially less in terms of a payment and savings than currently what departments are being asked.
When we looked at the charts, I think I asked Jason or somebody to send those, maybe it was Rob. When we looked at the charts when we were doing the equitable fees for water and wastewater, the charts showed that we had, by adoption of those, that for several years, we had a surplus that wouldn't be used. But when you get out to 2021, 2023, that gap began to close before it opened again. So in other words, your expenditure schedule remained below the amount that you had because we wanted to have a margin that was preserved out into the out use. So to me, this is a little bit like, more like borrowing out of another pocket that has more in it that you don't plan to expend, at least for this, for these years. So I don't, you probably don't have those slides, but Rob, you know the ones I...
I know what you're referencing, the area chart that goes...
I think there's like a total of $5.6 million in there over two or three years that's...
That's why we're suggesting this schedule is because of those projects and because we want to make sure that before the large projects do hit, and stormwater especially, that that money is repaid. So we've taken this into account to the forecast. We've only used the funds that do have substantial amount of cash in them and that we thought we're okay to loan that money. We didn't take from anywhere that is going to cause immediate or by this date have a very dire impact.
We're planning on having a, in two weeks, another work session, a fifth work session that would focus on utility rates and we could cover that in more detail at that work session.
Yeah, Randy and Brian both are planning on being here July 24th. And those charts you're talking about, they'll be showing. But you're both on point in terms of the impact and the analysis that you're talking about.
And some of that is, you know, obviously, if you spread some of those utility projects out longer, which is always a possibility too, if you don't want to raise the rates, it, that helps your revenue flow in that regard. But right now, the water fund is in pretty good shape and going up because of the heat. So obviously, I think we'll probably hit or surpass our projections this year, which is part of what we want to talk about on the planned rate increases.
And one thing I do want to mention with this cash reserve, if you want to call it an issue in the general fund, is that in future years with our tax lid, it's not possible to just raise property taxes if cash is low. That's become a non-existent strategy under the current tax lid because you need them for other things like operations, equipment, contractual services, commodities. So the current environment that we're in, I don't see changing under what we're currently by law have to do.
This is like a short-term fix, but I'm concerned about paying it back and how hard it is to pay back as the, in the next couple of years, not knowing what's out there. as the, in the next couple of years, not knowing what's out there. And, but anyway, it may be something we just absolutely have to do, but it's...
We have done it successfully before. I think we borrowed from the wastewater project that time and made it an effort to do that. Some cities, especially those that have municipal power utilities, they run their general fund off that power utility. So we're not proposing we do that. We're proposing to pay the fund back. We treat our funds as, as true funds as opposed to money revenue for overcharging in those funds to run city operations. So it's not something we're planning to do.
You're probably going to say this, Hillary, but to me, without having at least $2 million cash reserve, I think we run a risk with our bond sales and also with our auditors. That's something they mention all the time. They were heavily leveraged and part of that leverage has to be secured by cash reserves. So I think if Bernie was here, he'd probably say that same thing. Is that your impression?
Yes. For the time that I've been at the city, I don't, I cannot recall a bond rating that we've had where this is not mentioned. Because when they look at the size, when you're hitting $30 million in a general fund in terms of expenditures and the cash that you only have to show them is $750,000 and your budget keeps going up because of operations, you're not adjusting for that. And so it's a big concern to them, especially when we're in an environment like we are right now. And our city manager is correct. The last time we did this is when we lost state shared revenue and we had a sharp decline in revenue. So this has been, it's truly an emergency thing to do. But this is to get us out of the current situation that we're asking departments to be in, in the foreseeable future. So Mayor, when you mentioned a payback, currently, that blue bar here is what we're, we've asked departments to do. Very substantial, over $510,000 because of our balance in each year. So if we don't start January whole, it means that the hurt continues.
And I think it really illustrates, you know, our predicament is we've been in, as far as the city operations go, we've been heavily relying on sales tax funds as the primary source. But we've had a conundrum where other revenue sources have also fell short. So it's just magnified that particular issue. So Mayor, in answer to your question, we've got two years to figure that out, ratchet down our revenue projections and meet those expectations. And if we're not, we're going to have to shrink our force. That'll be, that'll be what we'll have to do.
This is very preemptive, but I think by the end of 2019, you could actually make a head payment if you wanted to and be a little kickstarted with this. Because you have 24 months to start that $510,000. And currently, that's substantially less than what departments are being asked to do.
General question, this might be slightly off topic, but since we're talking about these funds, you had mentioned how other municipalities sometimes use their utilities funds. Is, is it typical in enterprise funds like this that the personnel costs related to these are within that fund? Because we don't do that, right? All of our personnel costs are in the general fund?
No, they're, we make a transfer, so it's semantics. So you, if you're paying for, but most of our personnel that are direct, we have people that are shared, you know. So finance and our overhead support is part of what that transfer is that we make out of the utility funds to support the general fund, because that's really where those people are housed. But they're also, a portion of them are contracted out to the utility to do the billing and the accounting and that sort of thing.
So if I work at the water treatment facility, essentially, the water fees are...
You're 100% out of the water.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
And to give you a comparative, other cities, they will just have a pooled reserve. So if you look at some of our peers and what they do for a reserve, they pool it and then proportion it per the size of budget. So their budget looks different in terms of logistics because they have like a pooled fund where they say, here's where we get it from. So they would get it from utility fees, but also property taxes, sales tax. And then they say, well, this is what this fund requires in terms of a budget. So this is getting us somewhat down the road of $750,000 and getting us to reflect on this proportion of what we have in cash reserves. But it's not exactly what other people do either. I wouldn't feel comfortable asking us to jump clear to that because it is so different from what we currently do.
Well, I think the discussion here helped me understand it a lot better than the couple of paragraphs that I read here. So I'm glad everybody else was asking questions. Sometimes I just don't know what I don't know. But I, I wanted to ask Ron. Ron, you said this was done before, so was it done a few times or was it done once?
I think it was a, was it a three-year payback then or was it a five-year payback?
I think then it was a three-year.
So it was, it was similar and we did use, I mean, it was, we lost funds from the state that we relied on. Bernie references them quite often. And it just takes time to recover from that. And so, you know, we did, we did good on it. We had recently increased the, at that time, I think it was the wastewater plant because we were expanding the wastewater plant. And we changed some of our financing projects on those. You know, we were, there was a long period of time where we were doing pay-as-you-go in utilities and we decided to bond some things instead of doing pay-as-you-go to help our cash reserves in that component. And we're still doing a good job of, we, our debt service in our utility funds is not high by any means.
Well, I understand it a lot better now than, than what I read before. Thank you.
To move on, some of the slides were kind of of your earlier discussion and presentations. For 2019, the total transient guest tax fund is 1.84 million. And this reflects the total ask of the Chamber of Commerce or CBB as well as the outside agencies of downtown Manhattan, Aggieville Business Association, Manhattan Art Center, and Wolf House. It does include the $90,000 that we have to pay as a bond indenture for the downtown as well as a payment for Annaberg improvements and $93,000 for the conference center.
Let me ask a question before you leave that slide. On the beginning fund balance for the TGT, is this largely caused by the difference between what we anticipated and what actually came in from the previous year?
Yes. So in past years, we've budgeted very conservatively and revenues were coming in at a very expedited rate in terms of 2015 to 2017. I think last year as well as this year, we're catching more of a probable forecast with them. This year, we're adjusting it yet again with a 1% increase in the tax and making sure that what that is bringing in as well and adjusting our forecast per that. But in the past, we always would try to make sure that the budget was well under. And in the last few years, we've tried to make sure that there isn't a balance carryover in this fund so that it all is being appropriated. And then that way, we don't have large cash building up in it.
And that, just to make sure, that 321,000 in debt service, that's Annaberg and payment to the conference center?
Yes.
That's not the entire payment to the conference center?
No. Last year, there was, the funding that was approved was 260 from Economic Development Fund and 93 from the transient guest tax. And that's exactly what we did in 2019's budget, same payment as this year for the conference center.
So say that one more time, I'm so sorry.
260,000 from Economic Development and 93,334 from transient guest tax.
And the rest is in bonded interest?
And the rest of it is in bonded interest.
So we, we split it among property. There were, a portion of it was always property tax. And then we, we had a $500,000
Yes.
out of EcoDevo that was to go for three years. And, and total of, and that was just the way we took it. Because we, originally, when the economic development funds were approved, was that 1.5 million was somewhat based on what would be the job creation as a result of the conference center. And that was the targeted amount. And so we decided to spread that out over three years to help get growth in the community and build the property tax up. So we decided, the commission decided they didn't want to fund it out of, totally out of property tax. They didn't want to fund it totally out of, out of economic development tax either. And so that was last year, the commission voted to split it, not equally three ways, but a portion of, some, they raised the guest tax by a percent and divided some of that money up. And so a portion went out of the bed tax, a portion went out of the economic development tax, and the remainder was out of property tax and the bonded interest.
So to make sure I'm understanding right, so are, what Commissioner Butler requests, that would be essentially moving that 160-ish thousand dollars that's currently in debt services over to Economic Development? Or are we, are we doing what he is requesting already?
No, I believe that's what he was suggesting.
It's a precarious work session for him to be gone.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
This represents two-thirds of that $500,000. It was a topic of conversation last budget season.
So we have two more years of $500,000 on the conference center? Because we've just got, we've paid one?
No.
Of the 500,000 installments?
We have 11 years of debt service left.
That's a little longer.
We did 15 originally on the bonds.
Really?
Yep.
Okay, I wasn't here then.
We have a slide that will revisit this because it's the direction we're asking to. It's got, it's got the split delineated on there for you.
I don't go back far enough, I guess. Thanks.
Just a quick recap of the request that you heard from tonight. Chamber of Commerce asking for 188,000 and Convention and Visitors Bureau asking for 1.2 million out of the Tourism and Convention Promotion Fund. Quickly, this is something that we traditionally review on the evening that the chamber presents with all of the presentation of the economic development stuff being centered around the sales tax and what it provides to the community and their city's partnership with them out of the utilization of this fund. The Meadow Fab is the oldest sales tax that lived within the Economic Development Fund with the city. It was a city half-cent sales tax. As you can see, it was a much shorter timeframe, but generated a lot of sales tax in that short five years and over $10 million. And the 2019 budget has $806,000 of discretionary funding per Meadow Fab section of the fund. What we refer to as the old Riley County half-cent sales tax that was the sales tax that voters voted on in 2012 to renew, it remains its own division as well. The big things out of here being the $5 million commitment to INBAF. In 2019, a budget of 1.2 million with over $500,000 of that being discretionary in the budget. And then the most renewed Riley County half-cent sales tax that we're currently collecting for an estimated $30 million over the 10-year life of the special tax. 2019 budget, 5.87 million with 4.4 of that being discretionary.
I have a question. This is a Riley County half-cent sales tax. So Riley County receives equal amounts that the city receives?
They wouldn't receive, they wouldn't receive equal amounts. Our distribution is different.
Based on?
Based on.
Population, based on?
Based on population.
And assessed valuation.
And assessed valuation.
We have shown you the slide in past budget work sessions, but a quick recap of the $30 million in the renewed Riley County half-cent sales tax. 35% of that tax was approved by voters to go to debt service and is in the bonded interest fund and has been committed to paying off debt every year. The other 65% is split both ways between jobs and infrastructure with the largest balance being within jobs and at just over 4.5 million being collected to date within each of those sections. Tonight for you, we have a few items the city administration is asking for your consideration on before we publish the 2019 budget. As a reminder, once we publish, you can go down, but you cannot go up. So at that, what that publication is doing is giving taxpayers the notice that there's going to be a public hearing in August to have them come and talk to you about the budget as well as these work sessions and speak their opinion on the property taxes that we've published to be levied. So after that, you can decrease levies, but you cannot increase them. For tonight, we're asking you for direction on the following items. As the city manager mentioned, the utilization of the transient guest tax to be diverted this year to Annaberg sports improvements and the use of special park and rec funds for the Discovery Center and the general fund as well as continue the funding for the conference center as we have in the 2018 budget for the 2019, keeping all the funding the same. And the capital improvement funding and potential alternative sources for those items. We'd also seek your feedback if you have anything additional to the utility reserve loan to fund cash in the general fund as well as the publication for the 2019 budget.
Let me ask you a question on the EcoDevo spreadsheets here. Is the 2002 Riley County still accumulating revenue?
It does at a, at a very, you cannot forecast it because they're back taxes owed. So every month when we get the distribution from the state, our accountants go through and anything that has been processed for a date prior to the renewal goes to that old sales tax.
With, with the exception of the IC sale, we will have that 430, and you can actually see that on the...
That's what I was looking for in the second...
Right. It's that 400 and...
Where does that show up on the, I was looking, it's going to be, what, just 450,000 a year?
450, yeah, it's the 457,917 that's forecasted out of miscellaneous contributions.
That, when does that...
And that starts next year.
And then that runs for?
10 years?
Is it nine or 10?
10. 12 years.
Okay. Because it's, what was it, 5.2 million or something?
Why, they are looking through some of their papers. I had a couple of questions already written down for this evening. So one of my first ones is, I've said repeatedly, I'm all for cost of living increases. I want to make sure that we don't have employee wages going backwards. I want to make sure they're keeping up inflation. With that being said, and the step increases, I've read in one of our memos that it would, it kind of, the sentence was kind of worded as if it was going to be given to everyone. And this recent memo said most employees, or this recent package said most employees. So that's, does that additional 2% go to every employee or most employees?
It depends on the start date of the employee.
Okay, so can you explain to me the process of these step increases?
So they're giving it annual performance evaluations. So anyone that we know is employed by the city this year that's going to have an anniversary date next year we budget for. And then any new or over, you know, a position that would be open, that would be filled in 2019, they would not get a step adjustment until they've been on with the city for a full year.
So is that step adjustment based on merit or is it based on just you've been with the city for a year?
It's based on performance and what the performance evaluation comes in.
And in, with the $140,000 we've budgeted, is, I mean, are we likely to use that entire? I mean, I would assume that most city staff are underperforming, but I mean, how different do those numbers come out from year to year?
She'd have a better chance, but in general, I mean...
They would be very close. The only area that you... The only area that you have that you wouldn't know during budgeting would be those instances where positions have turned over. So between time that you pass the budget and December, if someone quits city employment, we've budgeted that person to be here. So that would be a savings in the next year, but you don't know that because of the way we have to budget in our schedule.
Why is it two percent?
So we, it's not really merit pay.
Okay.
We used to have merit pay, but we couldn't fund the merit pay adequately to call it merit pay.
Okay.
So essentially, if you are satisfactory or above, you'll get your step increase. If you're not satisfactory, you won't.
I mean, I, I guess, I've never worked for a government entity before. I've only worked for full-time three different private corporations, and I would, again, stand behind the COLA increases, that's something I expect. But with that being said, I've never, I've never received, I mean, I get my COLA and maybe like plus point five percent unless I get a promotion or I've moved up in the company. So, I mean, if we're looking at cost savings, that would be one that maybe I would look at just a little bit, as the rest of the commission deemed that was necessary. Again, I don't want to touch the COLAs, I don't want anybody to go backwards. But that two percent increase kind of, if we can't directly relate it to more than just a merit increase, I don't know. That's just, that's just an area I would want us to look at a little bit. The next question that I had, the contractual services and commodities not being broken out anymore still gives me heartburn because there's still an increase of five hundred and forty-three thousand dollars in that area of the budget, and that's ten million dollars of our General Fund. And I realize some of those things are pretty straightforward and are broken out in the budget, like paper and office supplies, things like that. But that's one area that still gives me a little bit of heartburn. But I noticed in this last packet, you had made, or whoever wrote this, had made a suggestion that if we had, if we cut commodities and contractual services by two percent, we would save a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. Was that two percent totally just, I'm going to throw a number out there, this is how much you would save, or is that two percent something that you think you could do?
Well, we would have to figure out ways to do without things. There's, I mean, it's money that we're spending today or we're saving to carry over, so that two percent reduction would be cuts in supplies, you know, I don't know, I guess maybe we wouldn't plant as many trees, buy as many materials, wouldn't pave as many projects. So, I mean, it's, that's, you have to look at where some of those big consumptions are. Most of the increases, I think, and we can certainly quantify this for the next work session, is to, that's certainly the major categories where those increases were coming from. I think there's some utility increases, you know, price of gas is going up, those kind of things. A lot of things we can't control.
Yeah, which is understandable, but I would love to see those quantified, because again, the way that's been laid out before, and I've brought this up at least three times at this point, is it's just a ten million dollar fund with a six hundred thousand, close to a six hundred thousand dollar increase. And that makes it really hard for me to consider and look somebody in the eye when I'm telling them I'm potentially raising their property taxes, that those are valid increases. So if we can quantify those based off things we can't control, like the price of gas going up, that will go a long ways towards easing my fears on that. The next thing that I had a question on is, I had also asked, and Ron, this was a conversation that we had via email, I also asked particularly what ones of the CIPs if we didn't do would drastically hinder city services or affect the safety of city employees. And that's not included in this, but I did note that it seemed as though you kind of called out the Microsoft licenses purchase specifically. So is that like the CIP, the Microsoft license purchases that we absolutely need and we're essentially saying we can go without until, I know you noticed the 2020 thing, but we can essentially go without the rest of those items till the future, and that's the only one we absolutely have to have? Or again, is that just semantics and we picked a random one to demonstrate a point?
No, it's an important purchase, and I'll let, I'll let staff comment on how we arrived at that, but, I mean, it would be delaying all of those other CIPs, or we had some suggestions for maybe covering a few of those with some other revenue sources, like the housing study.
Yeah.
You know, and it just kind of, that's been a priority item for the commission, and so if you wanted to, you know, fund more of that, we funded the whole comp plan out of economic development, so that we're already funding part of the housing study out of economic development. If you wanted to fund more out of it, you could.
Do you have something you want to add?
Well, I think when we threw that in there, it was more of a, you could speak to it a little, Hillary, but, I mean, we have to do the Microsoft licenses. I mean, it seemed like you wanted some scenarios of going down, what that means. Well, we don't do CIP, we push it back a year, so it's 2020, so everything just goes up the next year. But there was for sure that one, that we don't have an option to keep our Microsoft licenses for everybody.
Which, that's what I wanted to know. What, like, what CIPs if we do not fund this year vastly affect city services, employee safety? And that's, that's a good example. I just wanted to make sure that wasn't the only one. There wasn't any more on that list. The, oh my gosh, I forgot my train of thought. So, okay, I'll just go into this. So in general, if, I mean, you look at the step increase, you consider Commissioner Butler's suggestion making the hundred and sixty-six thousand dollar payment of the conference center out of the EcoDevo fund. You find a way to reduce contractual services by two percent, that's four hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars worth of savings on all of those things if we did the full amounts of each one. And then if we reduce CIPs down to just Microsoft licenses, that's one point three five eight mils. So we're getting close to like a two mil reduction there, which is pretty significant. And I'm not suggesting we do it fully out of all of those. I guess what I'm saying is, I'm seeing a way that we could raise the mil by less than one. And I've been convinced that keeping the mil flat is, is not the direction that we should go, but I see a path under one right now, unless I'm convinced otherwise before the next work session. And that's kind of, I just want to be honest, that's the direction I'm leading. So if I were presented up the budget today to vote on with a two point two per mil increase, I would vote no on it. Right now, under one seems reasonable, and again, unless I'm presented further information. So with that in general, the only other thing that I would add, and I'm sure I'll have more comments as the commission considers this discusses, I do think that we need to have another work session over the budget in July, just because I, I think it's important for Commissioner Butler to be here and voice his opinion on this as well, because since we're kind of hindered in how we can talk outside of public meetings, I would be interested to hear what he thinks about a lot of these things. So I think for sure we need to have one more session about the budget, but I'll let you all ask your questions.
Just a point if I could, and I appreciate the comments, that's the kind of feedback that we're, we're looking for. You know, we have, of the two point two, point three, four of that is PD and library, and they're set. So they get their six percent increase in PD, in personnel, compared to two percent if you cut steps for us. You also would have a fire union agreement that is pending as well. So, just food for thought.
It is, but it's frustrating that, it's frustrating that organizations that I, largely, other than the fire union, I have no control over, and I'm held to the, we're held to the same standards. I want to entreat our employees fairly, that's a priority, but I also don't think it's undeniable that we're in a bit of a law, and we're going to see our way out of it, but it kind of means we have to button down the hatches for maybe a year or two. And so, I mean, we do the same thing at any private company if that's, if that's what it's came to. And I don't think we're vastly cutting city services in any way out of this, we're shuffling some funds around, but I think it's doable to raise the, I think it's doable for us to hit under a mil from what I'm seeing right now.
I have some basic questions before I go to there, that. I'm looking at the General Operating Fund page in our packet, and number twenty-four is General Services. And it shows that it's gone up one point, almost one point five million. And there's a footnote that says due to employee health contribution, moving to the Employee Benefit Fund. I thought we did that in this year's budget, so...
No, that has already been moved, that's a prior footnote. It's going up in here because that's cash reserve.
Okay.
So that, we're planning on that one point five million dollar loan from Water, one million from Water, four hundred...
That's where the one point five is going.
That's where cash reserves are.
Okay. And then, under City University Projects, it shows an increase for 2019 of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So from seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars this year to, under special revenue funds, to nine hundred thousand is...
That's because of the sales tax that we're projecting, the university. So that fund is a strict calculation of the sales tax the university makes from the prior year that we calculate, and then we take out city fire services that we provide to the university and then franchise fees. So we're stating that it's going to go up by a hundred and fifty thousand dollars per the sales tax and franchise fees collected by the university for that fund.
But you're not projecting our sales tax to go up by that?
This doesn't...
What is it, percentage?
The calculation on these are different, because this fund, you're always looking in arrears. So you're always looking at that past year of what they collected and give to us as we collected this in sales tax. So if they...
Past year meaning 2017?
Yes, so, but typically it's at the beginning of the year. So we don't really know all of these numbers until the beginning quarter of the year, until we know what actual receipts they collected. So for 2019, we won't know until 2018 is fully concluded.
Okay, thank you. I may ask you again next year too. Okay, on item twenty-four, under Special Revenue, it's Special Park and Recreation, and it has moved from two point one million to one point one million.
So this was part of cash that's in that fund, and we took a million of it and bought down the Annenberg Improvements bond.
Okay. We bought down Annenberg, okay. Bonds. Okay, and the Downtown Redevelopment TIF, it shows an increase of five hundred and fifteen thousand?
So that's a, that's a very different mechanical budgeted fund. So, and that fund, it's probably more advantageous for us to just budget a really high number because we have to receive everything to those bonds and to our trustee. So if we have, we go over budget in collection of property taxes and sales taxes in that fund, we end up having to amend the budget to remit those to the trustee. So in past years, our projections were fairly conservative when we issued the bonds and the property taxes and sales taxes that are collected in that fund. We've had to do a few things over the last two years and move those sales taxes to other funds to pay them because we haven't had budgeted authority. So that's really just saying we have authority if this is collected, but we always only remit what is collected.
Okay, so you're estimating higher this year than the conservative estimates of the past?
So that if collections are increased, the property valuation goes up, we get more property taxes to pay those bonds, we can issue that to the trustee.
Under the Water Fund, it shows General Administration increasing by three hundred and forty thousand, it's the top of the Enterprise Fund page. Is there something that we're anticipating that would go that much higher?
That one has me stopped.
It says General and Administration, so it's the two combined. So I just wondered if we're...
Sure.
Till the next time? Hillary, Ron suggested maybe the answer will come in two weeks, okay. Meter Services is up by a hundred and ten thousand, and I don't think, that's not the employee, right? Because we, I know we're, we, when we change the parking time limit to two hours in downtown in Aggieville, we committed to another halftime, this is the Water Fund, sorry.
This is the Water.
Meter Services, okay. So we're talking about another meter person?
I think we're buying.
Oh.
I don't know what, I don't recall.
In the meter services, it appears there's a capital improvement program as well as the infrastructure maintenance for meter replacements.
Okay, meter replacements, I would...
There's two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for meter replacement maintenance.
It's important that we keep up with replacing old meters.
It's important they be accurate, right?
It's important that they're accurate.
Okay. I buy that, all right.
And Mayor, to answer your first question on Water Administration, there's two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars in capital improvement programs within Water Administration.
Okay, CIP.
General.
All right. Okay. Well, thank you, I just had, I think I'm through with just those picky little things that don't always make sense when you're just looking at it for the first or third or fourth time. Okay. I would just, let's see, you've asked some specific questions. Whether to continue to utilize the one percent of the, I support that, I guess it's, the time has come to make a change there with the transient guest tax, continuing the funding of the conference center as budgeted. So that's the five hundred thousand, right?
Do you want to continue the three-way split like we have, or do you want to move some of that money around?
I think I could live with it like it is, or I'd be agreeable to changing the mix too, so...
Obviously, if you reduce the bond and interest, the mil levy would go down.
I don't know what other commissioners are thinking on that. The CIP funding and potential alternative sources, nothing comes to mind. I don't, well, you've knocked the CIP down pretty much as low as you can. I did have a question about how you plan to handle some of the grant project matches that come up throughout the year. Like I know next, I'm sure it's going to be next year that we're going to have the Juliet, the final three blocks of Juliet. And so, I mean, there are some things like that, that it would seem to me that we're going to be...
I think most of our, most of our KDOT grant matches are either in Special Street and Highway or the, what's the other fund? That we've just got more money in?
Surface Transportation Program, STP.
STP.
So that's kind of a good news story. I mean, we're not going to get it till nineteen, but we didn't get any extra this year, but they raised it back to ninety cents on the dollar, right?
Correct. It was seventy, thirty, actually, it was originally ninety-ten, seventy, thirty as the state got in trouble, and now they've switched it back to ninety-ten.
So we'll have a little bit more money in that fund.
So those funds will come out of some kind of street match, the match will come out.
And most of those have been forecasted.
Uh-huh, okay, good. I just feel like the citizens of Manhattan have passed ballot initiatives that, to do progressive things here, and they, in our community in recent years, to build new trails and build community centers and pools and support of the zoo, even, even though these are recurring and they're ongoing, I appreciate that. It's important that we can depend on some, two million dollars in funding for street repairs, and those, those things make such a difference on, with regard to the load for the city, the city budget overall. I think they're part of... I think they're part of the quality of life we have here and, uh, that this, it's what the city, the citizens of Manhattan expect. So, um, I don't know if there's another part of this, let's see. Uh, well, one of the things you asked in our packet was direction on funding for outside agency requests. And, um, I would just say that I, I support the, um, the recommendations of the Social Services Advisory and the Special Alcohol Committee. I also think we, I am, yeah, I am interested in funding the Area Transportation Agency. Um, the Wolf House is 5,000 dollars. And, uh, the Manhattan Arts Center. I think it's important that we have some kind of a token investment. And that's about all I can say we have in the MAC is a token investment in, in the arts here in our community. So with regard to that one, um, let's see. I don't know how to even begin to identify any reductions. Um, and that's, um, at this point anyway, because there's, 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 there are no CIP items left. So it's hard to come up with something that, um, is that, um, specific. So, I don't know. Other commissioners have opinions, I'm sure.
Yeah, um, you have 1.17 mils for personnel. And I'm, uh, the negotiations just ended for teacher contracts at USD 383. And they have, um, for those, I don't wanna go into education dialogue here, but they got vertical, horizontal step increases. They got 1,200 some odd dollars on the base. Um, they got COLA. They got everything that, um, they requested. At least for that, as far as the personnel component is concerned. And RCPD, I know Mike and I worked hard to keep that budget down as much as we can. Um, but part of keeping our community safe is to make sure we have police officers and dispatchers that aren't going to keep leaving our community after they get trained. So we, we did support, um, personnel there. And that's the same thing I wanna do with the city. I think the reason our city runs well is because of our staff. We hear it over and over again, we partner with your staff. It's, they're so easy to work with. They, they do this, they do that. And all of that comes from their knowledge, from their experience and having good hires. And, and we wanna keep it like that. In a community that's as small as us, people do talk about something as small as COLA. Well, what did you get? The city got this, we got this. Okay, state is cutting there. But, so people compare themselves. Even if it's just a tiny bit, a penny here, a penny there, they compare themselves. And I think we owe it to our hardworking staff, um, to do the 1.171 mils for personnel. I'm comfortable with that. But I do wanna know what does a hire freeze look like? Because we have two staff that are being requested for hires. One does have a revenue source from the parking. But the other one, although it's only 32,000, I understand it's not a dramatic impact. But what does a hiring freeze mean? Is actually what I wanna try to get at. Are we looking at attrition? Are we looking at, um, you know, positions that we need, but we're not gonna hire, even though there was no retirement? What does that mean?
So the hiring freeze that we've implemented is, uh, for the rest of this year, uh, through 2018, uh, for positions that are funded by the General Fund. And not, uh, others that have, uh, revenue sources that aren't utilities would be the primary one that doesn't. So, uh, the new positions in 19, uh, obviously the one wouldn't be filled if we extended that hiring freeze into 19.
Okay. Yeah, well, that, thank you. Because I wasn't sure what that looked like or what that meant. That explains a little bit of it to me.
I also wanted to clarify your, your comment about the, the 1.7 mils.
1.17?
It, uh, in the General Fund. So the personnel part of that, the 700,000 is .6 mils. Right? No? It is 1.1. I'm sorry. I'm, I'm wrong.
Well, I was just reading, it was in my packet. I like it when once in a while I might be right, but that's, that's good. So, uh, it was mentioned somewhere, um. I'm comfortable with that, like I said. One thing I do wanna say, we are flat and we did decline in our revenue, uh, for sales tax. But we're not in a state of panic. You know, we just heard from the Chamber, from the CBB, from R2 and all of these things, that there's a lot of potential here. There's a lot of optimism, uh, there's a lot of synergy and, uh, a, a path forward. So we're just in a little dip right now, not in a panic stage. And I think our city staff is being very cautious and frugal in giving us direction by putting some stops on some of the places where we can without causing too much damage. Where we can fill up those gaps back in once we have our revenue sources coming back. Um, so I wanna state that we're not in a dire straits kind of position, but we do need to be just, uh, we're going slow, and I think that's, that's kinda where we're headed. I'm comfortable with still DMI, um, ABA, MAC, Wolf House, still going out of the, um, transient guest tax. For outside agencies request for the SSAB, I think it was, um, how much did they ask? 490? 447? And, um, I even thought about looking at cutting some of that, but when you look back at their documents and the visits that they've made, the time they put in, looking at the requests and coming up with those, uh, certain recommendations, um, I'm going to trust their judgment on their recommendations for each of those agencies. Uh, 447,000. And the other part that comes with that is that there's a lot of smaller communities that are shutting down. Or they don't have enough grocery stores, hospitals, uh, social service agencies in their own communities. So they are migrating into our community and we're picking up some of that. Um, so I think, um, we need to serve, as a government, we need to serve the, the people that can't serve themselves right now. Help them, give them a way out at the same time. Special alcohol funds, that already has a dedicated source, so I'm not gonna be concerned about that. The RCPD and Library was just a .34, yeah, .341. So that's not huge. We can't do anything about it. That's out of our control. The Conference Center, I'm comfortable with the way it's proposed in the bullet, um, transferring or diverting the funds the way it is. For the Conference Center, we have a bigger discussion going in that area with the expansion coming up also. But I might wanna look at the 166, 666 and see, um, what that might look like. Um, I don't wanna cut anymore as far as the CIP funding, so I think we've done enough there. I think the idea of boosting the reserves is a good one. I think that's something that, at first I didn't understand, but now that I have a better understanding of it, it seems like the right path for us to do. Because it has been done before and we did, okay with that. I do wanna keep the mill levy under 50, 50 mils. You know, even though we started off really high, I know we've held it down as low as we can the past few years. What often happens is if you hold it back too much, uh, it, there's still needs and they just compile on top of each other. And before you know it, we're going to not be able to meet those needs and hike it up, or, um, our city will deteriorate. If you want this to be a beautiful community where people wanna come, live, retire, return back to Manhattan, Kansas, we need to keep it going. And we can't keep it going if we're constantly putting things off. Um, so I think that's gonna catch up with us if we don't do some of that stuff right now that needs to be taken care of. So I'd like to keep it under, under 50. I don't know what that looks like. And look at the way we compartmentalized, uh, the money for the bond and interest and see if we can come up with a better strategy or different strategy on that.
I'd ask for a couple of things and I still want those. One of them is a spreadsheet on the SSAs, the Critical and Emergency Services. It has, remember what I asked for?
And I thought we did that, but maybe we didn't.
I didn't see it.
Okay.
But anyway, it's, where does all, list all of them, where do all their funds come from and what's the total? Then the other one is some kind of a reasonable forecast for the future. It doesn't have to be done on a supercomputer. This is stuff we already have. We just have to be able to put it down on paper. Okay, on the first one, what is 1% of TGT? What's the number? Is it like 1% of 1.8?
Yes.
Huh?
260. 260.
How do you get that number?
Total 7% generates the 1.2.
Yeah? So it's 1/7 of that? Okay. And what's the logic here? What, I mean, what's the logic of moving Flint Hills Discovery Center and, and putting in the sports?
So it's my understanding that the, uh, CBB and past CBB steering committees have, and the hoteliers primarily, have pressured, they didn't like the transient guest tax going to the Discovery Center. And so this was a mechanism that we saw that, uh, could be possible. Although, you know, if we do this, we're gonna probably ask you to change your resolution, which allows you to issue up to 2% in transient guest tax, cause the master plan and funding, at least in the near term for the, the Discovery Center, envisioned that transfer taking place until attendance built up and programming built up to not require.
Just trying to remember, the, the CBB said, geez, we'd like to instead pick up the, the sports turf support.
That was in their letter, their request.
Is that what?
Yes.
See, the, the thing I'm trying to, to do here is figure out when, when you're looking at the transient guest tax and CBB and things like that, what are the things that are bringing people to Manhattan? Not the things that people in Manhattan have the opportunity to use. So when you look at things like the Wolf House or the MAC, what, what are the numbers that they're bringing in? Is that truly something that you are trying to attract others outside the city to? Or is it simply a service that we think is reasonable to provide to our citizens? That's kinda the way I decide on those kinda things. That, substituting one for another. I, I, I always thought that the Flint Hills Discovery Center was one of those things that draws people here. It doesn't mean that sports don't, but it's not here yet. So that's kinda my feeling on that. I want 2 million dollar cash reserve. And on the 500,000, I want the TGT to continue, but I don't want any more bond and interest fund. That pulls 166,000 off of property tax. And, uh, just to continue with that thought, if we're getting 457,000 coming in later, it's gonna help replenish that anyway. Now, in order to, I think, get us to where we need to be, if, if you, if we look back over that, that one chart that you had from where we started with Budget Review 1 down to where we are now, with the exception of where we started, which was always really high at 7.7 or something, uh, we haven't pulled it down that much. So my recommendation here is to do things that you do in business or you do in the military and then you set certain goals and then you say, what does it take to get there? So my recommendation is you do at least 1 mil and 1.5 mil, if you want, do 2 mil. And without doing something like a poison pill, which I know you won't do, but this is a common practice elsewhere, in order to get to that number, what do you have to cut? And I wouldn't exempt personnel from those cuts, just so we know. Cause when you look at the budget, you have to know what you're, what it is ha- that happens when you make those cuts. And they have to be reasonable. You know, you can't just say, well, we're gonna cut 300 people. Um, that gets you to the number, but it doesn't do much for you. So, um, if you can do that, I think we would be far more comfortable with kind of seeing what the traffic will bear. Cause nobody wants things to go back downhill by not having something in there that's necessary. But that's kinda where I'd start. So, uh, 2 million, 500,000 only coming out of those two sources. And then some kind of, uh, budget levels for at least mil rates to find out what we can do to get there.
If I could touch on your transient guest tax just briefly. If you recall at our goal-setting session, we had a discussion about Flint Hills Discovery Center and the path that it's been on for the last six years. A lot of re- feedback we received from hoteliers throughout last summer and last fall were very negative about transient guest tax going towards the Discovery Center. And I fully appreciate your philosophy and understand where you're going. At the goal-setting session, we talked about possibly shifting transient guest tax towards debt retirement for Annenberg turf fields and moving another source into Flint Hills Discovery Center. So this spring, we met with the CBB Committee. Um, if you recall, Brad Everett calling, the whole committee was there. And the two members that presented this evening with Karen were also there. And we talked about switching those revenue streams, TGT, to retire that debt and taking Special Park and Rec Funds and putting them in the Flint Hills Discovery Center. They obviously have come back with that recommendation. That's the way we built the budget. I just wanted to remind you of the, of the history and the conversations we had. And I know it, I know your philosophy and, and again, I, I appreciate it and I, I think you're spot on. But that conversation built over the last 12 months and that's, that's why we're at where we're at.
Yeah, I, that, I think you're right on there. It's just that, that one is almost a, we, we'll have to make some administrative changes, but it's a net zero.
It is.
So it's not, to me, I mean, that's just in a, where you're allocating, it's not a, anything that's gonna save us any money.
You're correct.
Um, I, oh, no, Ron, you. I was just gonna say, I forgot to answer a few questions, so I'll go back and answer. But I just wanna echo Commissioner Dotson's comments in, in terms of creating out those scenarios, which is what I discussed, uh, with you previously. If we, I, I wanna know if we went back and voted right now and said you can only raise the mil by one, what would that look like? What would you do? Um, because I, I don't know what I don't know. And so sometimes these numbers seem uncomplicated to me, and maybe that's naive of me to think, but I'm making assumptions based off what I have in front of me. Um, and that's important, cause to get down to 1 mil or a flat mil, if we have to lay off 30 employees, that's, that's not only something that we should be communicating to the commission, but it's something the community at large needs to know as well about what that scenario would look like. Second, before I answer these other questions, I just wanna clarify my comments on step increase. So again, I'm for COLA, but if I work at a company and I am ranked from a 1 to 5, which is pretty typical, and I get a 3, that means I'm a satisfactory employee, I'm doing my job, I'm going to get my COLA increase, and that's great. Typically, for every company I've ever worked for, you only get merit increases if you're over a 4. You've performed exemplary, you're doing extra work, you're doing your job better than anybody else. Um, and that's where I'm kinda getting out in step increase. I'm, I'm honestly not the biggest fan of us handing out merit increases based on satisfactory performances. You should get your COLA increase to make sure that your base wage, your promise the day that you start a job keeps up with inflation. But you get raises based off of your performance and you get raises based off your performance being better, um, than everybody else's. I mean, that's just how the system works. And so that's what I'm getting out in step increases. I'm not saying that we should eliminate it as a whole. I'm just not the biggest fan of everybody who's performing their basic job duties, which they agreed to do in the first place, getting raises every year. And I don't know, I'm sorry if that's an unpopular opinion, but every company I've ever worked for, that's how we. ever worked for, that's how we operate. So, just, just something to consider. In terms of the allocation of the Flint Hills Discovery Center and Annenberg Sports Turf, I don't have a problem, because as Commissioner Dotson said, it's kind of a net zero. So, if it makes people happy, and city staff sees it as something that we should move forward with, I'm fine with that as well. I already answered about the conference center, I think that we should move that hundred and sixty-six thousand out of the bond and interest. I also agree that we need to have more than a two million dollar starting balance. So, I'm fine with what we proposed in terms of the loan. I agree with Commissioner Reddy, it seemed a lot less, the explanation and the discussion that happened around that eased some of my intentions and fears about it as well, so I think it's a good path moving forward. And, I, I mean, just last but not least, one of the things that I, I just wanted to note that's interested me during this, going through my first budget cycle, was a lot of times when we talk about this budget and these property tax increases, we'll say things like, you know, well, this is only seven dollars a month, or fifteen dollars a month. And that seven and fifteen dollars compounds a lot, obviously, over time. And there's a lot of people in our community, that, a lot of people in our community, that couple hundred dollars a month that they pay extra in taxes, is a difference between them living here and living in Wambeego and Clay Center. I know those people. That couple extra hundred dollars a month in their monthly payments were the reason why they didn't buy a house here. And if you just look at the flat-out numbers, I mean, Manhattan is sixth in first-class cities in our city mill levy. And the ones that are above us, I don't particularly think are cities that we are direct competitors with. A lot of the, a lot of the communities that we're losing population to, and we're competing for businesses, how much lower are mill levies for, than us? And I'm not on a, I'm not in a mission or a tangent, because I know that you guys do the best you can to keep that low, but at the end of the day, in Manhattan, Kansas, when sixty percent of people are, sixty percent of people rent, us raising the mill levy is almost just as regressive of a tax as us raising sales tax. I mean, it, I mean, that's just flat-out true. Because sixty percent of people in this community are probably gonna pay higher-priced rents, for sure, and those are typically ones that don't vote, and they don't show up to the polls to vote for those bond issues. And when we're looking at what's happening elsewhere in other government entities, and probably over a ten mil increase overall, that's a lot, that's a lot of money. And I, I mean, I lived that life, that's literally the hundred or two hundred dollars difference is what's preventing me from purchasing a home right now. You know, and I, I just, I want us to be very cognizant of that, as we sit in this room, 'cause I know that's an issue that a lot of people in this room don't face, but I live it every day with a lot of those other people. And I, I just wanna make sure that we're keeping that in mind when we're saying, you know, it's only fifteen dollars a month. Those things add up over time, and they're important.
I'm just going to say a few comments, just to, I guess, respond to Commissioner McKee's comments. The, I just wanna say about vertical and horizontal movement, when we say step increase, usually, at least in the teaching profession, and I think it's true probably with FIRE and RCPD, it's how many years you've worked in government offices, and also with, of course, they do evaluations, but it's not like a one-to-five thing, it's different. So, when we say step, it's how long you've worked, you get a certain automatic, whether it's a hundred dollars or two hundred dollars, vertical movement, and if you got more education along the way, then you get a horizontal movement. So, if you got a bachelor's and a master's, so it's not everybody gets a merit increase. That's, that's different than in private industry. The other part is, as far as the mill levy, mill levy, sometimes in order to provide the services that we're providing for the community, it, it has to come from somewhere. I don't think any of us are in favor of increasing any type of taxes, that's, that's, we all pay taxes, we're not in that zone where none of us pays taxes. But I think we need to be careful how we're doing it, and I'm trying to be more cautious as much as I can this year, because I don't know where the bond issue's gonna go for this, for the school. And that, that's kind of been my focus point as November comes along, and seeing what we're gonna do with that, and what the public is willing to spend, or what the public has to say about those things. And elections are a big part of it. In November, we don't know what the next governor's gonna do, what the next legislators are gonna do. So, all of those have an impact on how we make our decisions. When state government and federal governments cut funds, we have to pick up that tab, because we still have a community to run. And the ones that suffer the most are the ones that have the least. And, and it's our job to take care of all of them, all fifty-six thousand people that live in our community. So, that's what the mindset, when I, when I look at the budget, is, is what I'm thinking. What can we do with the least amount of damage?
Good feedback, so appreciate it. Sorry we kept you here so long, but I, I, it, it's a good discussion, and it gives us some direction on where we can come back to in two weeks. Thank you.
And we're not going to be meeting on July thirty-first, right? We are? No.
No. The next budget work session is July twenty-fourth.
Yeah, so the twenty-fourth will be, I, I was trying to calculate that out too, so, yeah. So, I just wanted to mention that to anybody that might be expecting what our future meetings are. I'd like to just say too, that the heat is pretty oppressive, and it's June, and has not even, or it's July, hasn't even gotten to August yet, which is typically our hottest month. And so, I've been visiting with a few people who are interested in trying to identify some kind of a public building that somebody that doesn't have air conditioning could, could go to. And so, if, if anybody has any ideas, you know, we can't just, we, we're cool tonight, but everything's, lately is over a hundred or near a hundred, and so, we need to be thinking about how that, how we might be able to just accommodate some of our neighbors that can't afford or don't have that option. So, anyway, I'd like for you to think about it. Okay, we're adjourned.